You ready?
Okay.
We'll call this meeting to order.
All rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting of some of the county is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Let me make a couple of things before we go into our invocation. First, if you've seen, the governor extended his executive order today through August 29th. Last week, we had received indication that it would expire tomorrow. So, you know, our social distancing guidelines and things like that will be on the table for the presumable future for the next two months. So, let me share exactly what that means for members of the chamber. You know, the public out in the seats, the seats are spaced out six feet. So, y'all are good. We would recommend that everyone wear a mask, but they're recommendations. So, what we've asked is, talking to Mayor Holt this morning, if you're in the, if you're in the, if you're a commissioner, we ask that you wear your mask, keep your nose and mouth covered through the entirety of the meeting that lets us proceed safely. As you know, Commissioner Driver got out of the hospital on Friday. His wife is still in, is still struggling. We want to keep Lisa in our prayers. We've had an employee in the building test positive, so it is coming to roost here. So, we want to take every bit of precaution to keep everybody safe. And we ask that everybody do their part to the best of their ability. I will ask tonight that when you're speaking, if you cue your mic, if you would, just remain seated. It's going to be hard if you stand up and talk like I know we normally do traditionally. If you stand up while wearing a mask, it makes it hard for the microphone to catch what you're saying, makes it harder to hear. So, I would ask that if you'll just remain seated and speak into your mic, that'll make things a lot easier for us. So, we won't get it perfect. We'll stand up some. If I remind you, it's just because I want everybody to be able to hear and definitely as it's streamed out over the Internet, we want the record to catch our voices. So, I'll ask for everybody's help and patience in that regard. As we go into our invocation, as I've already mentioned, we want to keep Allen and Lisa Driver and Allen's mother and son in your prayers. Commissioner Granger will give us a little bit of an update in a few minutes. I'd also like for you to keep Judge Carter in your prayers. And then Chief Williams couldn't be here tonight. They said that they had a swift water rescue call. If you notice, we had quite a bit of rain this afternoon. And so, they're out taking care of that, conducting a swift water rescue as we speak. So, we want to be in prayer for those in the way of the swift water. All right, let's power hits. Lord, we thank you for this evening and this time together. We thank you for your presence in our hearts and in our lives. And we pray for your wisdom tonight, oh Lord. Many, many weeks and months of work, many years of work have gone into the budget that's before us tonight, Lord, and the other things that we have to discuss. We pray for wisdom beyond our own, that we might see through your eyes what's best for our county. We pray for wisdom and guidance, Lord. We lift up those that we've named. We think of the Driver family. We think of the Carter family. We think of those in the midst of the swift water situation. We pray for our first responders, that your hands will rest upon them, upon our police officers, Lord, upon everyone who's put in harm's way. We pray for your mercy and grace upon them. Bless our body tonight as we deliberate. May we give you glory. It's in your precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's check our roll. Okay, let's check our roll.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
Yeah, we're working on it, Mr. Mansfield. Is it showing up on there? Are we missing those three? Okay. Okay. Yes, sir, 23 members present, 23 members present. We have Commissioner Driver missing or absent tonight. Okay. All right, and now, let's see. Roll has been called. We've got our regular and consent agenda. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yeah, I want to rise to a point of personal privilege, Mr. Chairman. I want to explain the reason.
Can you speak into your mic, Commissioner Taylor? I'm sorry.
The reason I'm not wearing a mask is because I have medical conditions that prevent me from doing so. I provided medical documentation to you, and this was known by the legal staff prior to this meeting a few weeks ago. So, I respect the outbreak, and I'm not doing anything to try to jeopardize anybody, but I can't jeopardize my own health either. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Hyde.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we take the resolution pertaining to the planning commission off the agenda and give the planning director an opportunity in light of the pandemic and people not being able to be as mobile as they have been, give the planning director an opportunity to condense what is in this massive document and go out to the six large city areas and hold a meeting. Now, that should not take that much time. That would be Good looksville, White House, Portland, Westmoreland, Galveston, Hendersonville. And schedule a time. If that's in a month, fine, then bring it back and let's vote on it, and it may be great. If it's not, then we will have a lot of citizen input and suggestions that might be helpful. So, I'm going to ask that we defer this until he has an opportunity to hold community meetings, and maybe even during that time, some civic clubs and so forth would invite him to speak.
Let me, Mr. Hyde, before we take that, let me get a motion in a second on the agenda, and then I'll let you offer that motion. So, if I can come back to you in a second. Is there a motion to approve the agenda and consider, Mr. made by? Yes, sir.
You motion to approve the agenda. It will be approved on the agenda, which is back, the document is being discussed. That needs to be removed, not motioned.
All right, if you'll give me a second, Mr. Taylor. I've got to have a motion in a second before I can offer, take an amendment.
There's not amendment, you collect the motion, not allocate the motion, remove it from the agenda. If I give a second, we go back to.
We don't have an agenda, Mr. Taylor. We have to have an agenda before we can remove something.
No, we don't. We're, we have to approve the agenda.
Right, we have nothing on the floor to discuss right now. We have to have a motion in a second to discuss what's on the agenda. And that's my ruling. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Rhodes. I'm going to come back to Mr. Hyde now. Mr. Hyde, your motion is to remove from the agenda the zoning for tonight, or to refer.
Yes, until the planning director has the opportunity to hold a meeting in those six large city areas.
Okay, so I think we can work on the way on that in just a second. I'm going to go to Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield. He was next in the queue. Yes, I do. Yeah, Commissioner Rhodes. No, no, the motion was made, the motion to approve the agenda is Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Rhodes. I see what you're saying, Mr. Mansfield. So, I got a motion from Mr. Hyde to refer. I need a second. You're right, Commissioner Mansfield. On the. All right, so refer.
Okay, we've been doing it backwards.
Okay.
Defer by our rules, not by our rules, but by our rules are 13 votes and debate. The refer is 16 and no debate.
Mr. Hyde, defer is 13 votes and debate, refer is 16 votes and no debate.
Well, and I'm aware of that, but I thought to remove it from the agenda that it would be simpler than that. But in any event, I'm not wanting to create any kind of problem here with this, but I would like to defer it, giving the planning director an opportunity to go to these cities, plan a meeting time, invite the local community to make it as easy as possible for citizens to get there to give input. And they may have some wonderful suggestions for us with this.
Okay, all right, so we got a motion to defer. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Guthrie. All right, Mr. Mansfield, you're in the queue. Okay, okay, you're fine. Can they speak? Okay, all right. I'm going to call, where's Dennis? I'm going to call a 10-minute recess, and let's see if we can get some sound to the microphones. We've got to figure this out. 10-minute recess. We'll restart at 7:32.
Mr. Chairman? All right.
All right, for the sake of time, I said 7:32. It's 7:26 right now. I'm going to call us back to order at 7:28. If y'all can let everybody know, I think almost everybody is back, but we have a lot of business tonight. Motion on the floor is to defer. Thank you, Dennis. All right, I'm going to call us back to order. I'd ask that all commissioners put their masks on unless, as you're able. We'll call this meeting back to order. Our motion on the floor is to defer. It's been made and seconded. Commissioner Chris Taylor is next in the queue, then Mr. Comenden.
Yes, sir, I've had the pleasure of being on the planning commission for the past year and a half, two years, and I can say I agree with Mr. Hyde in the sense that it would be great if everybody knew about it, and he should be elated of the fact that we did. Over the planning commission, we've had probably eight or nine different training sessions, which were an hour before each planning commission. It was published as part of the agenda. It was known, in fact, the mayor of Portland came to one of them and had discussion. It was opened up every time for public discussion. Everyone was made aware. I know every planning director for each municipality has been involved in the process. I know each mayor at one point or another has been discussed with it, about this. Because it involves the planning regions and everything else, it could not have been more exhaustive as far as reaching out to city leaders and the appropriate people in those planning divisions. More importantly, because we had to delay it once already, it's already been put out for publication, was widespread. We had it out on our agenda and everything else. So, everybody has had, what would have been just a month to review, has been three months because we quickly put publications out again. I don't know if we could have been more exhaustive and have done a better job of notifying everybody about it. And everybody has had at least, like I said, eight or nine different opportunities to come and speak about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Comenden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Commissioner Taylor said, the planning commission, we have, and our director, Josh, has worked on this for six months, ever since July, no, actually longer than that. We've had work studies at four o'clock, the third Tuesday, pretty much, or fourth Tuesday in each month, work studies on this, and some of the city, like he said, the mayor of Portland came one time and brought other people with him. It's been on the planning commission's website for all these months. The planning commission voted to approve this in January, and also, the cities have any revenue, which is not a lot. They've taken this out of their budget for this year, and that's why that we were wanting to get it on for, make it effective for July the 1st, and the county has put it in their budget as revenue as of July the 1st. And this is something, well, anyway, I would really like for us to suspend the rules and let our planning director maybe answer any questions, or, which I know he's on the agenda, you know, slated to give a presentation about this, but, you know, when right off the bat that, you know, you want to take it off the agenda, I would plead with you not to take it off the agenda, and let's do something about this. It's really been, it's one of those things that's been kicked down the road long enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Comenden. Without objection, I'm going to suspend the rules and let him, let Josh speak. And Josh, I'd ask if you would let me, you know, like, maybe just give us an overview of the process that went into planning this and the communication that's taken place, and then if any commissioners have specific questions, we can take those as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is actually a component of the presentation I was going to, I was planning on giving this evening to kind of go into a little bit of the background on how long the planning commission has been working on this. As Commissioners Comenden and Commissioners Taylor have said just a little while ago, it's something that's been going on for quite a while. We've been working on a basically a monthly basis since July of last year. I've been working on this at the staff level since the November prior to that, so not too long after I came on board here at the county. The county planners, all of them, including the school system and Ford Sumner and other planning type folks in the county, we get together once a quarter, and we meet. This is a topic of discussion that we've had multiple times with all the municipalities in Sumner County. I met with, as has been said, the mayor of Portland. Portland had a lot of questions about this. We've had several meetings with the mayor of Portland. I've kind of lost track of how many meetings we've had with him and with his planning director and other folks from the city, city engineer and other folks like that. It's, like I said, it's been vetted quite a bit. It's one of those things, as Commissioner Hyde mentioned, it is a giant document. There's a lot of information in there. If at all possible, you know, obviously, the commission can do whatever it feels is appropriate, but I would welcome the opportunity to be able to, just have the opportunity here this evening to explain it. And if the decision of the commission is to defer it at that time, I totally understand, but it would be beneficial, I think, to the commission to hear what's actually proposed. And I'd be glad to try to answer any questions if the commission has any.
Hey, before we take questions, let me ask everybody, please keep your mask on, keep your face covered while we're trying to have the meeting. So, like, please don't. Yeah, just cover your nose, just like this. Have it covered. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, any questions, any questions for our planning director? Okay. Yes, Mr. Guthrie.
Can I do a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm pointing a little bit at what Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Comenden pointed out. There's a few items on this commission that has been exhausted as much as this one. I do want to ask Josh, I know the answer to this question because I've asked it myself. Every city, correct me if I'm wrong, every city and every planning director has been reached out to by email and other ways to ask for their input, and they have responded.
It's picking me up, but yes, so prior to the, this was originally supposed to have been heard at the March meeting a couple of months ago. We did, my interpretation of state statute is that we needed to provide public notice to the executive officer of each one of the cities, so the mayors, their planning directors were copied on all those correspondences. That was back in March, and then we followed up prior to this meeting as well. So, they've received formal public notice twice for both meetings. As I said, there's been informal discussions. Had a conversation with the city of Hendersonville today, where we spent about an hour on the phone with the planning director and his planning staff, just talking through what this means and what the next steps are. That is a great conversation, but it's totally not unique in any way. We've had lots of conversations with the city staff over at the city of Galveston, Bill McCord and the other planners over there.
And not to interrupt you, no one had any concerns and think it's, but all think it's a good idea.
Well, I think overall, you know, and I'm hesitant to get up here at a public forum and quote anybody that I spoke to from the other municipalities, but I think, and as I'm going to, if I'm provided the opportunity to do, if I'm able to speak tonight, and I think there's a really strong understanding on the part of the municipalities, and I'm going to be a little bit blunt here, that the Sumner County zoning code is an embarrassment. It's, it is a disaster. It's a legal risk for the county, and that's something that comes up a lot. It's, I've explained to Commissioner Mansfield, has asked some questions about it. It is held up as an object of ridicule, the fact that it is so dysfunctional and so, it's so illegal in a lot of places, and it's so in need of attention. And so, it's something that I think they're very supportive of in that regard. Now, as far as the planning regions, that's a big change. That's something that's been in place since the 70s. And like I said, if I'm afforded the opportunity to speak tonight, I'll get into how Sumner County is an outlier in what we do with the planning regions. It's very rare to see what Sumner County does there. So, there's, if there's any concern that's been expressed, it's related to those planning regions. But at the professional planning level, like I said, it's very well established that what we have is decades behind even the smallest cities in Sumner County. Portland's is in far, far better shape than ours, and there's a substantial risk to the county, I believe, in not doing something about it.
Any other questions for Josh? Yes, Commissioner Taylor.
But I have some questions.
Yes, sir, you can stay in the queue.
It was stated earlier that this was put in the newspaper, what newspaper was it put in?
The only newspaper, I believe, there are newspapers that meet that criteria in Sumner County are the Galveston News and the Hendersonville Standard, and it was advertising in both of those newspapers, twice for the last two weeks.
Let me clarify, the Galveston newspaper, nor the Hendersonville standard, is circulated in Westmoreland anywhere, anywhere, nowhere. If you can find a rack, I've looked for them all over. So, I have to come to Galveston to buy my Galveston newspaper or have it mailed to my house. Also, we have done an exceptional job of communicating the COVID stuff over the last several months.
That has nothing to do with this. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, it does. If you want to talk about how you advertise stuff, why wasn't it advertised on Facebook?
You're out of order, Mr. Taylor.
Like everything else.
All right, let's move on. Any other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Hyde. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hinton. Who, did you have the question, Mr. Hyde?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell if it was you or Mr. Hinton. I apologize.
For fear of being misunderstood here, Josh, you and the planning commission have done a lot of work and tremendous amount of work, and I commend you for tackling this problem. And what you're saying about our system here in Sumner County is correct. It is outdated, and something needs to be done. And my inquiry here is nothing to cast any reflection on you or the planning commission or anything that anyone's done. I do have a question for you, though, and that's, I would hope that you understand that this massive document here is sort of like cooking a stew. And you may have had 18 meetings, or it may have gone on for a year and a half, but the meeting that I make may have to do with the carrots that go in the stew. The second meeting may have to do with something else that goes in the stew. We now have the stew. We have the total document. And what I'm saying is merely that I would like to see us go out to these areas and just ask the people what their questions are in regard to this, to give input. ask the people what their questions are in regard to this, to give input. I don't want to create any chaos, any confusion or anything of that sort. And do you think that that is, in your opinion, out of the question to be able to set up maybe six meetings in the county, in the large city areas and just, you know, two people may show up, but at least for the total document, we have given an opportunity for input. And then I would feel very, very comfortable voting up or down on something then. Is that out of question?
I'd be happy to do whatever the commission requests that I do, and Mr. Holt is my boss, or whatever he directs me to do as well, I'd be happy to do. As I said, it's, we've met all state requirements. It's been vetted quite a bit with the Planning Commission. We had a couple of, a couple of the final public hearings really were, to kind of use the terminology you're using, it was pouring everybody a bowl of the stew to lay it all out there and to communicate everything that was in it. We're not necessarily required to do that, but it is something that we did with the Planning Commission, to have the required public hearings. And that's essentially where, at that Planning Commission public hearing where I did the presentation, that's very similar to the one that I would be doing tonight.
I'm absolutely certain that you've done everything legally correct with this. I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, in my inquiry, that it would sure be much better if we didn't try to meet the minimum standard, if we went out and tried to involve people and get their input, and you could break it down for us. You know, I have seven years of education, but I'm not a planning specialist, and I would love to see you break this down and tell us what we had, what we didn't have, how this changes it in a simplified form.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'm going to, before we go to our next question, I'm going to remind everyone for one last time, please make sure that your mask covers your nose. Y'all, this is, we've got a lot of important business to do, including the budget. It's not time for stances or whatever else. Just please cover your nose with your mask. If it happens again, I'm going to have to, we're going to have to take a brief recess so we can move your stations, so please cover your nose with your mask. Is that going to be a problem, Mr. Mansfield?
I'm not worried about it.
I mean, there's just no sense in being obnoxious about it. Just please do it. Okay, that's good. Okay, that's good. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Graves?
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I've got, I'm in the queue, but I also got a question. I guess the first question I've got, are we going to let Josh explain this to us before we vote on the...
Yes, we have a 45-minute presentation later on this evening, Mr. Graves.
Later on this evening?
Yes, sir.
Well, I talked to Josh today, and I've had a few people call me the last few days about this. And one of them, and I didn't know either, that sidewalks, you had to have sidewalks, anything over three, well, actually, anything over three lots is considered subdivision. And this is not in that resolution, according to Director Suddath. But that's...
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, these are supposed to be questions relating to public action and the action of putting out. That is a question...
Mr. Chairman, I didn't appreciate being interrupted then.
But, Mr. Graves, did you have a question? Right now, we're just asking questions. We'll come back.
I did ask the question.
Okay, what was your question?
The sidewalks that we're paying, you got developers paying for sidewalks, and the money may be took in Westmoreland, and that money may be put in rural part of Hendersonville. We're taking money from a developer and not putting a sidewalk in.
Let me let him address that quickly, and then we're going to move on from this for questions specifically relating to Mr. Hyde's motion.
About deferring based on communicate, time to communicate with families across, or regions across Sumner County. Go ahead.
Yes, and Mr. Graves, you're correct. We spoke about that today. It's something that I've got a few questions about today. I sound like a broken record, but if I'm provided the opportunity to give my presentation here a little later on tonight, I will delve into that. We will discuss that, because it's something the community has asked some questions about. What the question is about is the county's comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2010. In certain parts of the county, if you're in close proximity to the cities, sidewalks are required. And back in 2003, the county commission passed a resolution that allowed a payment in lieu of sidewalks. And so, we allow the developers, if the Planning Commission doesn't feel like putting sidewalks in on that little three-lot stretch is appropriate, the developer can make a contribution to the county in lieu of doing that, and the county is allowed to spend that someplace else. That's something that was done back in 2003. That's not, nothing about that is new. It's all stuff that's well over a decade old and sometimes almost two decades old, but folks have kind of seized on to it during the last few days.
Okay. I don't think we need to hear all of Josh's presentation right now. We've got that later if we get this, if this is on the agenda. Does anyone, Mr. Hinton has a question?
Yes, and this is procedure. This is not...
Yes, sir.
Are we going to have public comment on this issue?
Yes, sir. We have public comments on, the way that's written on the agenda tonight is, we have, we have public comments for everything else except this issue. We have his presentation, then public comments specific to that, the zoning issue, and then deliberation by the body.
Okay, well, the reason I wanted to know that, I've got a petition here with 59 names on it that is requesting that this be delayed. Now, I don't know whether you want me to talk about that now, or do you want me to wait for public comment? I just want to get this in the record while...
Right, let me, Mr. Hinton, let me come back to you after, let me get him done with taking questions, then I'll come back to you first.
That's fine.
Yes, sir. All right, any other questions?
I have a motion.
Hang on, let me go to Mr. Wright, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Wright?
Josh, I appreciate everything that you've done. You work your backside off, and it is appreciated. But number two, I don't live in any city. I live in a rural area in this county, and believe it or not, we still pay taxes, folks. My people want to know and explain in person, and I know you don't mind doing that, and I'd appreciate it. Some of the stuff that is in this, over 300 pages. All we're asking, it's not going to hurt that much. I heard somebody say, well, we're already depending on the revenue out of some of this, and it hadn't even been voted on by the commission? Thank you.
All right, at this time, I don't see any more questions. I'm going to guess your motion was to go back to the motion?
I...
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ring.
I move that we postpone the vote on this until after Josh has made his presentation.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring to post, hang on, let me talk to the law director for a second, so we can postpone this. We can't. Yeah, that, we can't make that motion, Mr. Ring, because we don't have an agenda. We're still on, we haven't set the agenda yet. All right, Mr. Hinton?
I'm...
Hang on, we'll get you. Give me, there you go.
I don't know what I want to do. Do you want this petition read under public comment, or...
Why, you just go ahead and read what the petition says, and then we'll enter the names in the petition. We know there's 59 names, and we'll put that in the record.
And I'll read this and then bring it up there for the... "We, the citizens and landowners of Sumner County, respectfully request that the new documents of the Sumner County Planning and Zoning Commission be deferred so that the citizens that will be affected by this proposal may have adequate opportunity to review." And I have 50 names, and I'll bring those up if you'll allow me to be part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. All right, Mr. Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm speaking on the motion to defer.
Okay. Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir, thank you, Josh.
I appreciate the planning director's work on this document, even though I have questions, a multitude of questions from citizens about it, since we represent a good portion of the rural part of this county. But I know that it's been said that there's been hearings at 4:00 PM. I appreciate that a lot of people are working at 4:00 PM, and they're not able to make meetings at 4:00 PM. And last I checked, the Planning Commission meetings were not videotaped or shown so people could actually watch them. It's a little bit of a problem for people. Another problem is, is that we're in the middle of what you're calling a global pandemic, requiring us to follow guidelines, and as of Friday, the county mayor sends out an email saying, "Limit unnecessary contact with others, and please isolate yourself as much as possible." So here we are, pushing through a zoning document that's almost 50 years old, a change to it, with massive changes to our county that will change our county landscape forever. And we're doing it in the middle of a pandemic when people are discouraged from coming to meetings, essentially. I don't think it's right, it's the wrong thing to do, until this pandemic is over and people are encouraged to actually show up and come to meetings and come to community meetings about this and hear things, since they weren't recorded and people are working, they can't get here at 4:00 PM for an hour work-study session to hear what's in this document. I've read this 335-page document. I don't know if you guys have, but I've read it, and I've got a lot of questions and a lot of problems with it. So I definitely would love for the citizens, and the citizens have posed a lot of questions to me. So my point is, why are we taking up such a large magnitude when even the state advises from the comptroller's office and C Task to not take up any business that is not necessary dealing with budgetary items during this crisis? And as things are ramping up and everybody's starting to go back into panic mode, here we are, doing a public hearing on something that's going to adversely, in a lot of ways, change people who live strictly in the rural communities of our county, and they haven't had time to get it. Nobody's known about this. I've had people say, I hadn't heard about this. Sure, it's been on the website, and it's been in a Galton paper. Like the commissioner from the first district said, it's not been in Westmoreland paper of general circulation. So the more that we can be transparent to the senior commissioner from the eighth district's point of actually having them have a question-answer session with the planning director would be super helpful. So I just don't appreciate us doing things and taking advantage of a crisis in order to push things through that will greatly change the landscape of Sumner County. So that is, that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Taking advantage of a crisis. Commissioner Kruger?
Oh, you want me to wait till later?
Okay, Commissioner Paulson?
Mr. Chairman, I call the question.
Motion called, question, your second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chris Taylor. All right, let's vote. Vote on the question is on the board. Commissioner, please record your votes. 14 votes, Mr. Chairman. We have some voting problems.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, can you, can we read vote during voting? You state exactly the vote.
Yes. All right. We're calling a motion on the debate on the motion to defer. A yes vote is to, is to stop debate and vote on the motion to defer. A no vote is to continue, is to continue debate on the motion to defer. How many of you other people are in the queue? One? Three, I think. Two, I think. Okay, so, all right, we have, we have 19 votes cast so far, 122. We have three that did not register. All right, Mr. Mansfield, are you a yes or a no?
I have a no for the call cast question.
I have a no for the call question, Mr. Graves.
Oh, no.
Mr. Comended?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Comended is a yes, Mr. Mansfield, Mr. Craig is a no.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a yes.
Okay, Mr. Comended is switching his vote to a yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, I just wanted to check. Start to see, thank you.
Our vote is 16 to 6. The motion passes. Question is called. Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Somebody didn't vote.
Somebody didn't vote, that's all. All right. Mr. Wright, did you vote?
This is, oh, this is crap.
Why, Mr. Wright's a yes.
Mr. Chairman, it's not really correct. Okay. There's been a lot of work, and we're now back, we're now back on the motion to defer.
Okay, so let me explain this before we queue it up. The motion is this, if you vote yes on this motion, it requires majority, 13 votes. If you vote yes, then we defer this. If you vote no, then we go back to the agenda. Okay? So a yes vote is to defer. Motion to defer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record their vote. 16 to 6. Mr. Taylor, you got your vote? Mr. Mansfield, yes or no?
I have a yes to defer.
Okay, yes to defer, Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Yes to defer, Mr. Comended?
No.
Okay. All right, vote, 11 a yes and 12 a no. The motion to defer, it's going to defer, fails. All right, let's back to approving the agenda. Give me one sec. Mr. Baker, are you on the agenda?
No.
All right. Mr. Lotte, are you on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I move to remove the Planning Commission document from the agenda.
They motion to remove the planning document from the agenda, second by Mr. Mansfield?
Call the question.
Yes, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Beatty?
I call the question.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir.
We can't call for a question without you, like, voting.
What?
Without you, like, voting.
Okay, that's correct. We might have to list those people, because you can't call a question.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Mansfield?
Oh, I was going to talk about an agenda item first, but...
Okay, you're fine, but you don't...
I think Mr. Becker's still in the queue, sir.
I can hop back in.
Mr. Baker and Mr. Comended?
Okay. I was just curious, so how much, how much revenue is this going to generate that's, and the budget committee has included the revenue? I'm just curious, what is that amount?
It's long, you can find the amount. For me, Mr. Becker, I mean, it's just time to find out, and we'll get through the debate, and then before we vote, let me tell you, that's okay.
It wasn't 20, Mr. Chairman.
It was not included, Mr. Becker. Before we...
No. Because there may be some offsetting costs.
We, Jim, we were going to wait on it.
There may be, there may be offsetting costs, but there's no revenue directly applied. Okay. Okay. Mr. Kruger?
I'm sorry, Mr. I told this to be next to me.
Go ahead, Mr. Beatty.
I was just going to call for a question.
Can I get Mr. Gregory to respond?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I think that the comment that was made earlier about it being, the cities had already utilized, had already taken this into account for their budgets, meaning that the cities were going to not necessarily get fees, and they've already accounted for the loss of those fees in their budget. Is that correct? Was I misunderstanding that? Okay.
You're right, yes, ma'am, that's it. And Mr. Suddath and his planning vision, Marshall, Coles, all discussed it, and they felt they could make the adjustment without any increase to personnel or expenses at this time. Instead, they would evaluate it throughout the year and see where it was at, and if we needed to bring in additional people, we would look at that later on when we had a better idea what the revenues might be.
Right, okay. I just wanted to clarify, I was thinking that was about the city budget, some more so than ours. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Mr. Comended, is there no one else in the queue? Great, but did you want to say thank you? You were in the queue, okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Comended.
If we would just let Josh give his presentation, then all these questions would pretty much be answered. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Comended.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Comended. All right, a yes vote, a yes vote is to remove this item from the agenda tonight. A no vote is to keep it on the agenda. Yes vote is to remove, no vote is to keep it on the agenda. Let's vote. Remove the planning item is, uh, each commissioner, please record your vote.
All right, we got six, six to fourteen.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield?
My, a yes to remove from the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield is a yes to remove, Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves is a yes to remove, Mr. Comended?
No.
Mr. Comended is a no to remove?
So it's eight to fifteen.
So by a vote of eight, in the eight ayes and fifteen nays, the motion to remove fails. Back to the agenda, Mr. Mansfield?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I would move to, um, just switch around an item on the budget committee. Item number three, which is, which is two zero zero six dash zero five, if we can move that to first, fixing the tax levy before the budgets, what we did last year, I just noticed, was looking at the agenda last year, um, and wanted to know if we could move that, switch, switch that in the first in the queue on that.
I hear no objection from the budget chair, so that's fine. I think we can leave them as numbered, we will just, when we get there, Mr., yeah, Mr. Taylor will do that one first, Mr. Mansfield, and that won't mess up our numbering scheme. All right, let's vote on the agenda, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, I've got Commissioner Mo Taylor voting no, and twenty-two affirmatives, so the mo, the agenda passes, regular and consent agenda. Your minutes are before you, is there a motion to approve our minutes? Motion by Commissioner Foster, second. Second by Commissioner Kruger, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Our minutes pass unanimously. All right, recognition of the public. Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Okay, I have no one signed up for citizens, for public comments on anything other than the zoning. We do have someone signed up for public comments on the zoning, but that will come later in the meeting. So at this time, we'll move on from recognition of the public to the report of the chair. Uh, one announcement I would like to make is that, um, we have a lot of certificates of recognition that we have deferred by not having a March meeting, and we have greatly limited those, and we have some that are time-sensitive, like valedictorians that we always do. So my recommendation is for us to start the July commission meeting at 6:00 PM, and that will give us an hour to honor everybody. If, depending on where we are COVID-related, uh, we may have to stagger that out and encourage people to come in, like we may have to do a time, like this recognition is at 6:00 o'clock, and this one's at 6:10, and this one's at 6:20, and that'll give us enough time to give honor to those, uh, people, because I'm afraid if we, if we wait too long, uh, we'll miss out on being able to honor those like we do every year. Uh, obviously, if things get worse, um, and we're in a different situation, as you know, this changes day by day and week by week, we may have to rethink that strategy, but my plan right now would be for us to start our meeting at 6:00 PM. And I, and I would ask that, uh, committees look and see, um, the committees that meet that night, see if you need to have a meeting that night in July, if not, feel free to cancel it, but if so, if we can just, uh, if y'all can, if our chair persons for those committees can work together and come out with a time. Is that amenable to everybody? Okay, Ms. Kruger.
I'm on. Um, yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to address, it's obviously pretty clear at this point that I'm pretty adamant about us wearing masks. Um, I'm not trying to be difficult, we've got a lot of, the cases are drastically increasing as if they, it wasn't bad enough before, it's gotten worse. Um, and I appreciate commissioners coming forward that have got medical reasons, I totally appreciate and respect that. I just ask that everyone else respect the fact that some of us might have family members that almost died five years ago this month, um, with kidney disease and Crohn's and other illnesses. And to act, and to be disrespectful of my children and my family is, is not okay, because I wouldn't do that to anyone else's. So I appreciate everybody wearing their mask, covering their face, covering their nose. It's not about being difficult, it's just about being respectful of each other and each other's families. On a second note, we need to be leading by example on this, the numbers are going up for a reason. If we're not willing to wear masks, how can we expect anybody else to wear a mask? And for the public health and for our public economic health, I think we all need to be willing to take some steps. And, and I don't love wearing it either, it is not the most comfortable thing, but I do appreciate everybody here wearing one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kruger. All right, uh, consent agenda, excuse me, your veterans' report is on your, in your packet, attached, uh, consent agenda items, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Comended, second by Michelle. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, let the record reflect that Commissioner Mo Taylor voted no, I have twenty-two ayes and one, uh, no. Motion, uh, consent agenda is approved. All right, your written reports are on your desk. Uh, notaries, is there a motion to approve our notaries? Commissioner Echols makes the motion, second by Commissioner Ring. Let's vote. Notary applications are on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. I got you, Mr. Graves. I got you, I'm coming to you in just a second.
Twenty affirmative votes.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield on notaries?
Yes.
Okay, yes for Mr. Mansfield, Mr. Graves?
I don't vote.
Yes, okay. Mr. Comended?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, notaries pass unanimously. Uh, I skipped over this in my report, I want to backtrack just a second, I'd ask Mr. Graves to give us a brief update on Commissioner Driver, so if we could cue Mr. Graves up, Mr. Kemp?
Well, I, I hadn't really talked to Mr. Driver, but I've been, I texted him a couple of times, and, uh, of course, his wife Lisa, she's, uh, still, she's doing something better, uh, she's on breathing machine, uh, I don't know if it's the BiPAP, BiPAP was the last time I heard. Uh, it, it could have, but her breathing's some better, but it's not near well enough for where she can come home or anything, and, of course, Allen has come home, he, uh, he is, uh, doing okay, but he said that his breathing's still not where it needs to be, the son is, uh, doing a lot better.
Good.
And his mother, uh, of course, she's ninety years old, I guess it could change any time, but she's having a rough time, but I think she's doing some better also.
That's good, that's good, thank you, Mr. Graves. Uh, Mr. Driver texted me today and asked me to thank everybody for the prayers and calls and texts and cards, and let's continue to remember him in our prayers, um, he's doing a little better, and as, uh, Mr. Graves reflected, Lisa still has a long struggle ahead of her, so let's keep her in our, in our prayers and thoughts. Okay, thank you, Mr. Graves. All right, uh, committee on committees, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, committee on committees met its regular scheduled time, July 29, 2026, 30. Uh, we had, uh, two items on the agenda, tourism board, Marley Tyce, uh, reappointment by the county mayor, it was a one-year term, it was unanimous, I so moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Ring. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Airport authority for information only, Richard Crawford, uh, term expired, that will come back up, uh, next month or the following, when the county mayor's had the opportunity to make another recommendation. Uh, Todd Burnham, term ends July 24th, Steve Shepherd, the county executive, recommended that he take, uh, his place, uh, it was unanimous, I so moved.
Okay, motion made by, uh, Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Foster. See no one in the queue, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Ms. Chairman, um, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, just, uh, for everyone's information, next month is on your agenda, and for a, an announcement, um, it's hard to believe another year has gone by, uh, but we are in the process of, our, where, as you all know, um, in non-election years, where, for the commission, we do committees, new committees, uh, in August for committee on committees, and then September, uh, for re, uh, sitting committees. Um, I'm sorry, August, yeah. Um, Maria will send out, like she always has and have for the July meeting, the appointment sheets, I was to say this announcement so everybody can be thinking about it, but we'll have those traditional appointment sheets that she'll hand out and email out for those who want email, that's it, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goode. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, education.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Uh, Mr. Hinton, highway.
Highway commission didn't meet, but there were some correspondence come out of the highway commission in reference to the sidewalk situation, as we're going to vote on here directly, and, uh, that can turn into a rather awkward and expensive situation for Sumner County if we don't, not careful how we approach that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hinton. Uh, General Ops, Michelle?
No report, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, emergency services, Ms. Kruger?
No report.
Okay, oh, yeah, you got two things on you.
What? Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I forgot, we did not meet, I forgot, sorry. Hold on, let me find the resolutions. Uh, we have two resolutions for, uh, employees retiring or as additional compensation. Um, a resolution authorizing the gift to Major Carl Edison of his service weapon and badge as additional compensation for his services rendered to Sumner County. Be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this 29th day of June 2020, this body hereby authorizes the gift to Major Carl, Carol Edison, it's Carl, isn't it? Carl, okay, that's a type of, Carl Edison of his weapon Glock Model 23 Pistol, serial number MMH836, and badge as additional compensation for his outstanding commitment and service to the citizens of Sumner County, and I so moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Kruger, seconded by Commissioner Ring. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, Ms. Kruger?
Okay, a resolution authorizing the gift to Lieutenant Keith Bean of his service weapon and badge as additional compensation for his services rendered to Sumner County. Be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this 29th day of June 2020, that this body hereby authorizes the gift to Lieutenant Keith Bean of his weapon Glock Model 23 Pistol, serial number ZLZ896, and badge as additional compensation for his outstanding commitment and service to the citizens of Sumner County, and I so moved.
Motion made by, motion made by Commissioner Kruger, seconded by Commissioner Guthrie. All right, hey, I don't want to, before we vote on this, because I know these are always unanimous, but I don't want us to move, and I know we got a lot on the agenda, but I don't want us to move too quickly, because the, both of these, uh, both of these men and their families deserve honor for the, for the job that they've done and the work that they've done over their careers, so let, let's take just a moment and, uh, let's vote, and then let's show our appreciation for these two men for their service. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And, uh, Mr. Weatherford, if you would pass on our congratulations and celebration, I wish we could, you know, I wish we could do this in person, but, uh, but we're very appreciative of them. Okay, uh, Ms. Kruger, did you have anything else?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Becker, financial management?
Uh, yes, the financial management committee, we met, uh, earlier this evening, uh, just to pass along, just as informational purposes, um, the, we have a bond rating hearing tomorrow morning, 8:30, I know Mr. Lawing's, uh, well-prepared, uh, and for that, and then from a certain timeline, or if the timeline goes as planned, probably will be issuance, uh, of, of a bond sort of around the mid-July timeframe, so I just wanted to share that information, so, good luck tomorrow, Mr. Lawing, appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. All right, uh, budget, Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Yes, sir, we're going to go a little out of order, 2006 dash 05, this is fixing the tax levy, Sumner County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending July, June 30, 2021. We're asking that we leave the rate exactly the same, 2.2620, and that the only change would be, where last year we had moved a little bit of money to capital from debt to pay outright for the jail pod, we put that back to debt so we can go back on the timelines that Mr. Lawing has created for us, that we pay everything off in time, I so moved.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Mr. Mansfield, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It was just one second, Mr. Mansfield, we're getting the camera over to you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I had a question, just looking through some things in the budget, uh, as regard to the tax rate, and, you know, I kind of rhetorically asked myself, I mean, and asking this as a body tonight, um, about how, how we keep taxing people who might be hurting or on fixed incomes, or unemployed or underemployed, especially now during this crisis, I know it's affected my family personally, and, you know, we, we do tax increases, uh, to pay for things that are needed, um, but, you know, there's no question on, on funding, but the question I have is, is I see in some of the budgets where we're increasing reserves every year substantially, in a method that I feel that we could use that to offset some of the taxes increases we've done. Um, the one thing that specifically dealing with the tax rate that we did last year, I'm just looking at these printouts from, uh, the school budget the past eight years, and in, in eight years including this year, and, you know, in 2013, 14, the reserves fund balance started at roughly 15 million dollars. You know, in 15, 14, 15, I think I said, 13, 14, 15 million dollars, 14, 15, around 23 million dollars, um, 15, 16, again, around 23 million dollars for the reserves fund balance, 16, 17, or almost 21 million dollars, uh, 17, 18, almost 23 million dollars. We get to 18, 19, we jump up to about 30 million dollars in reserves.
Point of clarification, sir, I apologize, Mr. Mansfield, I just want to make sure I understand right, are you suggesting that we use the one-time funds in the reserves for a reoccurring cost each year, which is our capital and our day-to-day fees and everything?
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we do one-time funds, no, sir. Okay. So, this year...
The reserves are one-time funds, just so you're aware of that, sir, just to make sure.
So this year, last year was 32 million, 850,000, almost 33 million dollars in reserves. This year, it's, they, that was left off this budget summary from the school board for the first time in, in eight years, so I found out from the paper that it's 40 million dollars, 500,000, um, is what the paper said in the Tennessee Stand, uh, Andersonville Standard. So, my question is, is how is, you know, I see the school board every year has a budget of revenue, but then they, they budget the expenditures over the revenues to greatly exceed the revenue. And what happens, I've watched the amendments that come through, that we put on these consent agenda as every...
Mr. Mansfield, let me interrupt you for a second, because you're, you're speaking a lot about the budget that we'll vote on a little bit, or right now, we're talking about the tax, the tax rate.
Well, I'm getting to it, if you can give me a second.
Sure.
So, the problem is, I see what we're doing in this, with the school board budgets, is that they, we budget over our revenues for expenditures, but then through the year, every, all these expenditures are pulled back out, they're never really used, and they're put back into the, uh, reserves, and so that's gone from 15 million dollars to 40 and a half million dollars, and that's, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting accounting practice for me, uh, to watch that, because what it's really telling me is, is that we've had that money in the school board budget technically for a very long time to do teachers raises like we did last year. So, simply for the fact, because these, this money keeps getting put back in every year, every year, and it's increasing substantially every year. I mean, 40 and a half million dollars, even if, let's say we would have used that money for teacher, uh, pay raises at 8.8 million dollars and not put 12 cents on the tax rate, we could have, even with the mandatory, um, you know, statutory requirement for the fund balance, you'd have 21 million dollars still left over in an unassigned, uh, unbudgeted, undesigned fund balance, if we did that this year. And, you know, go, looking back historically, that's been an average 21, 23 million dollars of still a reserve, uh, twice the amount that's actually needed, but, you know, I just find it hard to say that we're, you know, balancing budgets and, and when you budget over your revenues and expenditures, so what I think we could do in order to help alleviate the tax burden for citizens and, and people who have lost their jobs during COVID, citizens who have, um, been underemployed, excuse me, I'm stuck in this dust in, um, we could, in my opinion, move to reduce the tax rate by 12 cents and match that 8.8 million dollars out of the recurring... reduce the tax rate by 12 cents and match that $8.8 million out of the recurring reserves, because this reserve is recurring every year.
Point of clarification, this is contrary to any kind of accounting or fiscal, it doesn't work as impossible. And I would ask Mr. Lawing to address the gross miscalculation of it. It's horrendous.
Let me check. Mr. Mansfield, are you making a motion?
Say.
Are you making a motion, Mr. Mansfield?
Yes, sir. I am making a motion.
Could you state your motion?
My motion is to reduce the tax burden for the citizens of Sumner County while also still keeping the teacher pay raises in place by using the recurring $8.8 million in the reserve balance, because right now, this year, we're putting, they're pulling $6 million out to go into some unknown unbeknown fund just as a savings.
Okay, that motion is out, that motion is out of order, because we cannot, the school board is constitutionally elected. You can vote later on, you can vote yea or nay on the school budget or on the budget. No, I'm not done. Hold on, Mr. Taylor. Hold on. I'll come to you in just a second. I'll give you a chance to talk. You can make a motion to change the tax rate. You cannot make a tax, a motion to specify how funds are used within that tax rate for the school system.
Okay. So I move to reduce the tax rate by 12 cents this fiscal year. Okay?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Mansfield to reduce the tax rate by 12 cents, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Sir, I would ask that we suspend the rules to allow Mr. Lawing to address this.
Sure. Mr. Lawing.
Well, I believe first, before we look at that, we're going to have to go back and recalculate maintenance of effort to make sure we're not going below last year. Statutory, there cannot be a budget presented that's not bringing in at least as much money as the prior fiscal year. Then also, we would have to look at the budget quite-
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Lawing, could you sit down, because we can't hear you standing up?
I'm sorry. Let me sit closer to it.
Sit closer, push the mic down a little bit. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Mr. Hinton, can you hear?
Okay. First, we would have to go back and do an MOE calculation to make sure that we are not shrinking the schools' budget below the prior fiscal year. Then we're also going to have to look at the amount of those new teachers' salary increases versus the increase in the fund balance, and also look at the year-end calculation for the schools, because they have a requirement for MOE, which has to be at least as much as last year. They have an ending fund balance requirement, and their expenditures have been increased by $8 million for the teachers. On top of that, we're in the middle of the recession, and some of these reg, these revenues, we feel are conservative, but we don't know. There's no prior models. If there's a second shutdown, these local revenues could be significantly short. That would be like cutting off any kind of parachute you have. And on top of that, if you're talking of pulling $8 to $9 million out of the year, it would not take very long to expire the money. And then what I've been seeing at the state, and Dr. Phillips confirmed it, there has been cut in the BEP for a 2% teacher raise that was built in the original budget. So even at this point, the budget's been tightened up. So there's a lot of concerns because of the COVID right now. There's not been calculations on the MOE. There are several things, and then also, without significant decreases in expenditures, I dare say, unless they're $9 million above the minimum, which I don't believe they are, then it would also create issues on approval of the budget. And I could be wrong and may want to address it to Dr. Phillips more specifically to make sure that I didn't say anything that was incorrect.
Mr. Goode.
Yes, sir.
Can you cue your mic, please?
As was stated, there was so much mist true stated, and I'd like to, let's see if you, Chairman, suspend the rules. No objection. I have Dr. Phillips speak to these issues.
Sure. No objection. Dr. Phillips?
So I'd be glad to address any of those questions. You know, David mentioned BEP. When I was here before the committee, the joint committee, Education and Budget, a question was asked of me about, was I comfortable about the BEP number? And I said no, because the legislature had just, was there still at that point. They did reduce our BEP by about $2.7 million the following day. So $2.7 million of the revenue that we've stated within our budget has been, is gone already. They're not going to send that to us this year. So I think that kind of reinforces what Mr. Lawing was saying, that, you know, we're in a time here where we want to make sure that we have enough fund balance to continue recurring cost, because we have payroll to make, and we have things that we're obligated to do within the school system like any business. And I think that would be a terribly bad financial move. As far as the fund balance, I remember those conversations back in 2013, and we were screamed at for not having a fund balance. Commissioner Mansfield wasn't here. I was here. I remember laying off all the teachers. Okay? So I think it's probably easy to say you have too much fund balance, but on the same token, I've been screamed at for not having a fund balance too, right? It's kind of tough to have it both ways. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Mo Taylor, do you have a question? Commissioner Taylor, do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay. Mic's coming to you. Hang on. There we go, Commissioner Taylor. Oh, hang on. There we go.
With everything that's been going on this year, I understand having some expense reductions, diesel fuel, electricity, water, sewer, gas, because kids ain't been in school for a third of the year. So I can understand having some fund balance there. You know, I had a conversation with somebody, and they said, well, now they, you know, they, they're still paying the salaries. And that's correct. I understand that. It's a reoccurring expenses. Could you explain how it got to $40 million?
Sure. Your restricted amount goes up each year based on what the state requires us to keep. We also go back in each year, and just like the county does, we reallocate dollars within the budget to pay for expenses through the line items. There are 1,100 of them in there. The one thing I think some of you may be missing, we only implemented seven twelfths of the pay increase. So don't forget that. You generated enough capital or enough revenue for the entire 12-month cycle, because that's how it's taken in. But I was very specific when you voted in last year and said, we would like for you to start this in January, that includes seven pay cycles of the raise. So the 8.8 million, the difference between that and what the county generated is the increase in the fund balance. And you can do the math there on the sheet.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Phillips? All right, I see no one else in the queue. Let me explain. A yes vote on this amendment is to reduce the tax rate, reduce the tax rate by 12 cents. Okay? Reduce the tax rate by 12 cents. A yes vote is to reduce the tax rate. A no vote is to keep the tax rate at its current rate, or, excuse me, to go back, excuse me, the motion would fail, we'll go back to the main motion. So a yes vote, yes vote, is to cut the tax rate by 12 cents. A, a no vote is to return back to the main motion. Yes, sir.
I have a question for the wall director. Is this, are we breaking the law by lowering the tax rate after the school board, which is, you know, constitutionally elected, has set their budget already?
I think we couldn't pass the budget if you lower the tax rate, because everything is based on this tax rate that has been proposed.
Okay.
Okay, so if you vote yes, there is no budget conversation tonight. We go on a continuation budget. We'll have to reallocate everything. School board will have to, county will, all the elected officials will. Okay? So yes vote, that is absolutely true, Mr. Mansfield. Let's vote.
The resolution to reduce the tax rate by 12 cents is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield, is he yes? Mr. Graves?
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Commandant?
No.
Mr. Commandant, is a no?
Two, 19, one.
Okay. I have two yeses.
19 no's.
19 no's and one abstain. No, 20, 20 no's with Mr. Commandant. We have two yeses, 20 no's, one abstention, Mr. Graves absent. Okay, amendment fails. All right, I see no one in the queue. Let's vote on the main motion to set the tax rate, keeping it at the same level.
Tax rate resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
No.
Mr. Mansfield, is a no. Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves, is he yes? Mr. Commandant?
Yes.
Okay, so I have 21 yeses, two no's.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Okay.
All right. Motion passes. Commissioner Taylor?
Yes. 2006-03, this is making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Sumner County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. There was a slight change. We, Mr. Witt and Mr. Nipper led a committee, and we're actually implementing this this year, where we're appropriating money. And then what will happen is all of the nonprofits that are considered non-governmental will apply for them. There will be a subcommittee or a committee made up through the Committee on Committees. It will include citizens from the county, and they will decide the appropriations to the different nonprofits that have applied for it. We felt this was, for once, probably the fairest way we could ever do it, instead of just paying who we paid before and just saying that's how we always did it. I so move.
Okay. Mr. Goode. Mr. Mo Taylor?
Yes, sir. We've eliminated some things in this that, that caused into question. I understand the way that's going to be handled going forward, but just because I understand it don't mean I agree with it. So, so I'm going to move to add last year's funding back to the senior citizen centers of Sumner County.
All right. Do we now, Mr. Taylor, do you have any ideas?
I've got 700 pages over here. Let me find it.
They're not submitted.
Mr. Taylor, are you talking about one in particular? Because they're all still applying for it. They, they've all applied, or understand the new process starts in the fall, so they're all applicable for what it was before. I just want to make sure I understand what your motion is.
I would never segregate any senior citizen by anywhere they live. So I'm, I'm talking about all of them.
So you'd like all the senior citizen centers that, to receive the same money they received last year?
Yes.
All right. We got the amendment from Commissioner Mo Taylor to set the funding for the senior citizen centers at last year's level. Is there a second? Second. Second about Commissioner Mansfield. Does anyone wish to speak specifically on the amendment? Okay, Commissioner Kruger.
So, well, all the other nonprofits-
Mr. Chairman, just give me a second.
Well, all the other nonprofits are going to have to go through a different process. We're adding the senior citizen centers in separately so they don't have to go through that process? Is that what is before us?
Mr. Taylor, bring him around. Your process is, senior adult, senior centers would receive their funding. Would receive their funding irregardless of the application process. They would get it right off the top. Is that correct?
Oh, wait. Yeah, that's my amendment.
Okay. All right. Yes, Ms. Kruger, that's correct.
Okay. I, I just don't think, I don't necessarily think I see the fairness. I appreciate our senior citizens and what to do for them, what I can, but I don't think they're any more important than Casa or Ashley's Place or all of the, there's a lot of nonprofits out there that do great, wonderful things for all kinds of citizens in our community. I don't know why we would give preferential treatment over one versus another.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Kruger. All right, is anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? Mr. Graves?
How much is that money?
Mr. Chairman?
$50,500.
Mr. Lawing, can you tell us how much money there is on the senior adult centers?
It is, Mr. Chairman, it's $50,500. If you look on page 12 of the budget.
Go ahead and sit down, Mr. Lawing, if you don't mind. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I keep forgetting about that, but-
Mr. Lawing, I mean that with the utmost of respect.
But, but if you look at that, the actual, there's actually a $75,000 appropriation to cover that $50,500 that's already in the budget. The only difference is making right now is the county commission ultimately has to approve who gets the money. But there's already appropriations in there.
Okay.
But they're just not directed directly toward the senior citizens at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawing. Is anyone else?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Graves. Hang on, then we'll come to you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Graves, did you want to turn this off?
Dan was first.
I'm sorry, Ms. Witt.
She was first.
I'm sorry, Ms. Witt, I apologize.
That's okay. That's okay. I don't know if there's maybe just a confusion. It is a different year, you know, and we are trying to implement a new process. So Commissioner Taylor, just want to make sure that there's just not confusion on what that process is and what you're proposing to do. What we would like to do is, we'd like to consider all of our senior centers, along with all those true charitable nonprofits, which in our current year or past year budget would include Home Safe Salva Center, Cumberland Crisis Pregnancy Center, Sumner Teen Center, and all of those true charitable nonprofits, we would like to look at them holistically, along with our senior centers, for the services they provide the community. And we will do that as Chairman Taylor had already, or Chris Taylor had explained earlier, October.
So you can do that October?
Yeah, there's, there's already, the application is out there for them, and it is due October 1st, right?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Witt. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
What the?
Hang on one second, Mr. Taylor. Let me get the microphone back to, or the camera. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
To clarify what the, Mr. Finance Director said, or somebody said, there's $75,000 in there. Is that solely designated for senior citizen centers, or is that designated for all?
All charitable nonprofits. That includes the ones that we just talked, that I just mentioned, along with the, the five senior centers, that would cover their budgets that we have currently.
So, you know, just let's hypothetically say that, you know, some, maybe all the senior citizen center don't get anything, and everybody else gets the rest of the money. There's nothing, we're not voting on anything tonight to, to ensure that doesn't happen.
That's why we're asking the new, the new nonprofit committee to look at all of our nonprofit contributions holistically.
Hang on, hang on. Let me get back, let me get back in the queue. It's okay. Mr. Goode.
Mr. Chairman, I just like to echo some, I think, some of what's been said, is this commission has been talking about this process for many, 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 many years, as everyone here knows, about getting a better handle on our, how we just dole out nonprofit money without a kind of, just because who jumped in line first, and we, some people might deserve it and don't. And as mentioned, Ms. Witt took her committee with Mr. Nipper, and they put together this process that was unanimous in budget. And lastly, every one of the nonprofits, because they didn't come to budget, was made aware of this new process, and they're all fine with it and going through the application process if that wasn't mentioned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Becker, are you on the amendment or the main motion?
I'm on the main motion.
Okay. Mr. Hinton?
What if the amount goes up? What if when you do your calculations for the senior citizen centers, the amount comes out more in this budget than it was last year? Does this motion include reducing the senior citizens down to their current income, or does it leave it flexible enough, if the funds are there, that it could go up? That's my question.
I think, Mr. Hinton, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Taylor's motion is to set it at last year's level, which would just set it at last year's level, because we would essentially, I think, as Ms. Kruger pointed out, we would essentially have a two-tier process. We would have a senior adult center process, which would be for them to get the funding from last year, and the other nonprofits would apply for everything else. Ms. Witt, does that sound correct?
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right. All right. Mr. Howard, are you on the amendment or the motion, main motion?
What I'd like to say is, I, I think that maybe there's a little misunderstanding with where Mr. Taylor is coming. Being a little bit involved in this process, it's, it's a good one, and I support it wholeheartedly. But I think that what Mr. Taylor is doing, and you alluded to it, is setting a floor for the senior citizens, saying that it would be no less than the previous year. And I'm, I'm just trying to explain, I think what he was saying, it could go up. But I think he's saying that there is a floor of not being less than what they got last year.
Okay.
That is different by the nature.
Okay, so let me restate it and make sure the motion and second are good with this. What you're saying, Mr. Taylor, is that you- What you're saying, Mr. Taylor, is that your amendment is to set the floor for senior adult centers at last year's level? Okay. Mr. Mansfield, are you good with that as a second?
Restate my motion.
Okay.
Or my amendment. I don't want it reduced from last year's level, but it could go up.
Right. So a floor would be that they couldn't go below last year's level?
And I, you know, I changed my amendment on that, that just that, it's fine to discuss it in September, October, but I want, I wanted amended to include that. It's fine to go back through the committee process and allocate the money then, but I just want to set the precedence that it, it does not decrease from what it did last year.
Okay. So the amendment is that it can't go lower than last year's funding for senior adult centers? All right. Okay. Mr. Mansfield, is that good with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Motion, amendments made. Michelle?
Thank you. I just want to say that I will be voting against this, and the reasoning why is it would negate everything that the committee has done. It's always been discussed in budget. When they have a set amount that we're going to give them, we've discussed why we give it to them. They present how many meals one may serve while another doesn't do meals, but they may offer this service or that service. And I think that was the whole reason why we asked for this process to begin in the first place, so that we could figure that out and make it fair and make sure that every, not only senior citizen, but every nonprofit agency has what they need in order to do what they need. And so I don't think if we agree that we're going to give everybody the minimum of what we've given them in the past, that we're going to solve the problem that we set out to solve in the beginning. So I, I would ask that you do not vote in favor of this, because it's going to negate the entire process.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I was just sort of just echoing what Michelle just said. I was on the, on the committee with Ms. DeWitt and others that sort of looked at a better way of divvying out the, the monies that we, we give these nonprofits. So I'll definitely be fighting for the, the senior citizen groups when, in October, whenever it comes before the full commission again. But I'll also be voting no for this specific one, just because of the process that, that we're trying to put in place.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Uh, Mr. Tinsley?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I think this is one of the most ludicrous things that we've ever discussed here, but, um.
Go ahead, move on, Mr. Tinsley.
So if we're going to go through and we're going to, like, set a floor for the senior citizen center, then I respectfully ask that we start setting floors for every one of our prospective preferred charities here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Uh, Mr. Rang?
Yes, sir. I've been concerned about the way we do this for a number of years. I've expressed that concern almost every year. What's happened over the years is that every year nonprofits who want to make applications are told, "We're getting ready to change this system, and so please hold off on your application till next year when we change the system." That's been going on for four, five, six, seven, eight years. There are a lot of nonprofits that would like to, to apply for funds, but have been told, "No, because we're going to change the system." Well, it's about time, it's time to change the system. I'm all in favor of the senior citizen centers. However, they should be treated the exact same way as every other nonprofit is, and I don't see there's a problem with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rang. Ms. Kruger?
I, I think I'm just kind of, kind of echoing what everybody else has said, or what several others have said. This was something we started talking about six or seven years ago, back when we couldn't get the schools funded. And I remember everybody, all the citizens were in uproar that why do we even have nonprofits in the budget at all? And I still have citizens that ask me that. Why do we give any money to nonprofits when, you know, the Sheriff's Department could use more money and the schools could use more money? I understand why we have them in our budget, and I think once you talk to people, they understand a little more too. But there was a process that people put a lot of work into to revamp it and make it more equitable and more fair. And I don't see any reason why we're looking at changing that on the floor tonight, when they've spent months working on making it better. So I will not be supporting this.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Mr. Becker?
Main motion.
What's that? Main motion? Okay. All right. All right. No one else in the queue? So a yes vote is to set a floor for senior adult citizen centers at last year's funding level, okay? A no vote is to return to the main menu, or main menu, main motion, which is to approve our nonprofit budget and the process that Mr. DeWitt outlined for how to allocate money to nonprofits. Okay. So yes vote is to set the floor. A no vote is to continue back to the main motion.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay. Mr. Mansfield?
Yes to the amendment, sir.
Mr. Mansfield is a yes on the amendment. Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves is a yes on the amendment. Uh, Mr. Comended?
No.
Mr. Comended is a no. So I have four yeses and nineteen nos. Uh, the amendment fails, nineteen to three. All right. Back to the main motion. Mr. Becker?
Sorry, I'm.
There we go.
That's, that's my fault.
Um, for the, for the fire departments, I just, just need some clarification here. On page, I don't even know what you call it, page twelve essentially.
Twelve, I think.
It shows twenty-four thousand for each of those fire departments with a hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, I'll say a lump sum, if you will, um, for a total of four fifty. But if you're looking on page forty with the details, I'm, I'm, I'm showing, it, it's showing that, one, two, three, four, five, five of those fire departments are, are actually going to zero, and the balance of those five is being lumped into the rural fire protection appropriation line. So still total of four fifty, but my question is, yeah, do you understand, is that? All right.
Key your mic. There you go. There you go.
All right. So this year, we checked their paperwork really closely. And apparently, you know, by state law, we can only give them to a nonprofit. A few of them maybe had let their nonprofit status, I don't know, expire, owed the state a little bit of money, maybe didn't have some paperwork right. So, and the idea that we knew they would eventually get it right, we set their money aside, but by law, we couldn't directly give it to them until they have their stuff straight. So what we've done is we've set it aside so they get the exact same amount as everybody else did last year. Nothing's changed on that. It's just those organizations that had to get their paperwork right now have time to get their paperwork right, and without missing out on their money.
And the two fifty-eight is still there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the money's still there. It's just when they get their paperwork right, and we can legally give them the money, we will give them the money then.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, no, they, they were a little, one hadn't done some paperwork for thirty years.
Mr. Goode?
I just want to add to Chairman Taylor's comments, is that those that are not in compliance are aware of it, and I'll agree, they're going to make it right and get back in compliance.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Goode. I see Commissioner Steve Graves.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wondered about the hundred and thirty-eight thousand. I didn't understand what happened with that.
Commissioner Taylor, there's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand rural fire protection.
I went before I had my microphone on. I apologize. Um, what happened was some of the, the fire halls this year had not done their paperwork right to maintain their 501(c) status. And because of that, we couldn't by law give them money. So what we did is we set the money aside for them in that fund. And then what happens is once they get their paperwork right, and the ones that are wrong know it, and Mr. Lawing's got with them to make, and we're helping them to make sure they get everything. In fact, Ms. Denham was helping one of them to get them pointing in the right direction. Once they're good, they'll come back to us with their paperwork, and then we'll give them their money. But that, we wanted to make sure they had it, so we had to set it aside.
They're going to get the twenty-four thousand.
Yes, sir. They, everybody will get it when they get, the few that don't have their paperwork right, as soon as it's done, we'll get it done. Sorry about that, sir.
Okay. So now we're just down to two, according to Mr. Lawing. Uh, Mr. Becker?
So I think, and I apologize if I'm just, if I'm just completely missing here, but I think the one thirty-eight is, was already, like, on page twelve, each of the fire departments has the twenty-four, but then there's additional one thirty-eight. So if I understand, Mr. Taylor, Chris Taylor, correct, the five departments on page forty that, that are in question, those twenty-four thousands are removed, and the extra money is, is added to that one thirty-eight. So I, I guess maybe I thought Mr. Graves' question was going to be, if, if all of them get, if each fire department gets the twenty-four, there's still a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in the rural fire protection line item. So clarification, the question is, how will that hundred and thirty-eight be, uh, be determined, how it's going to be used?
Mr. Lawing, could you turn your mic on?
That's the same, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand that went to emergency services last year. And I believe all the fire departments worked together and determined how to allocate it and brought it back to emergency services. That's the same hundred and thirty-eight, and we're down to two fire departments that don't have their nine-nine or got issues at this point. So most of that's been resolved, too.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I see no one else in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution, nonprofit resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield say yes. Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves say yes. Mr. Comended? Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Yes, sir. Two thousand six dash oh-four, making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Sumner County for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2020, and ending June thirtieth, 2021. I so move.
Commissioner Taylor, second about Commissioner Kruger. Commissioner Taylor, what was the amendment?
Thank you, David. There is, uh, just so everybody understands, at one point during, uh, the budget process, ECC had brought forth an increase, and this is approved by their chair, or their board. We, as a budget committee, had said no, because we were not doing increases for any, any department. We stuck with that, other than the few exceptions where they'd let us know ahead of time. It went back to their board. Their board had all approved it. All the municipalities, each city, has agreed to pay the difference. We make up thirty-two percent of that. We had said no. They came us, but they came back, and we had an emergency meeting today asking us if we would at least encumber it, because in getting into their minutes, they're allocating money with the idea that the economy gets better and stabilizes. Our motion for it was that we would include, we would encumber the money for them related to the market adjustment after I had had the chance to meet with their board, because Mr. Lawing and myself and the budget committee had some questions about other items on their, their line items, one being overtime, one being some supervisors that were going to get increases in pay, and we didn't think any of that needed to be in if it was a market adjustment for dispatchers, because they were losing dispatchers. So we've asked to include that money. It will be locked and frozen, so to speak, until I've met with their board. We bring it back, and then it will be approved again by the budget committee, and then it will come before this body again, before we approve it. And again, it was something that all the cities voted for. We didn't. They asked us to reconsider, and so the compromise was that we would at least encumber the money and hold it until all of our questions were answered, and then this commission could decide at that point if we would give the money or not.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
I'm sorry. Do you want me to describe the amendments necessary to place that back in the budget? Do you want me to go through it real quick? To place that back in the budget, if you take your appropriation resolution, and I'll give everybody time to look at it, and you go to the second page, about halfway down, it says, "Other public safety dispatch." To add that amount back in, it would require that to be changed from the three million eight seventy-two, seven eighty-one to four million, three eighteen, two fifty, which is, which is the increase. And it would require the total at the bottom of that page to be changed to seventy-two million, six eighty-two, two two three. The corresponding budget document would need, need to be adjusted on page two, and there would need to be a line item inserted in that could later be adjusted for four hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, called other cost. And then on page, let me find my page number here. Page number nineteen, there's a line item that's reimbursements from the cities for their share, the sixty-eight percent share of the consolidated dispatch. It will need to be increased by three hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. And then the net difference of those will need to decrease fund balance on page seventeen of the document by one, one hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And then there's some summary sheets that would flow through that. But basically, what's happening is the appropriations would be increased by four forty-five, four sixty-nine. The revenues from the cities would be increased by three oh-two, nine one nine, and it's a net decrease on your fund balance in the general fund by one forty-two, five fifty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lawing. All right. Uh, motions been made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Mansfield?
I want to speak on this, the motion for that. Is this for the, um?
It, it's included in there.
Yeah, I'm speaking on the main resolution.
This is the main resolution.
Okay. Yeah, I, I moved, uh, separate the budgets.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Mansfield to sever the budget into its component parts. Seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. All right. So just so you know, if you do that, then we have to vote on each individual budget, item by item. Yes, we do.
One vote.
Mr. Taylor, if you sever the budget, then you have to vote on the component parts. That's, otherwise, it's not a severing. It's a budget. Okay. That's the different parts. Okay. Point taken. Separate parts. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. A yes is to do what Mr. Taylor just suggested. A no is to continue to keep the budgets whole. Let's vote.
All right. The motion to sever the budget is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
There it goes. There it goes. There it goes. Twenty? Okay. Um, Mr. Mansfield?
Yes to sever the budget.
Mr. Mansfield is a yes to sever the budget. Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves is a yes to sever the budget. Mr. Comended?
No.
Okay. Okay. By vote of six to seventeen, the motion to sever the budgets fails. Commissioner Mo Taylor, you're next in the queue.
Yes, sir. I want to clarify something before I get started. I appreciate the work that the budget committee, schools, and everybody put into a budget. I served on the budget committee for four years, so I understand the work that goes into it. So thank you. I've got some amendments to the budget. I came before the budget joint committee meeting two weeks ago, and I asked about the four hundred thousand dollars that I requested through the process. And if I can talk without being interrupted, I want to make a clarification. I was given some information that was hopefully partially accurate information in a grossly inaccurate manner. And I believe it was. I believe it was just a, a confusion on, on some people's parts. So I'm going to offer an amendment to the, um, to the, to the budget. And, and here's what I want to, some background I want to go into. We have a, a current grant going right now to extend water lines in Sumner County. When I questioned this other night, I was told that we will never be done with our current project this year to be able to apply next year. Well, you allocate funds in advance for this, and this is the point where we need to do that, to be able to apply for a grant next year. I've had numerous conversations with parties involved in the field, and I've received emails, which are public record. Open documents are requested, if you would like, from the state of Tennessee and the GNRC, that this project is moving along rather well. The construction should be completed by Labor Day. It should be closed out by Thanksgiving. So you have to go through a process of public hearings and meetings to be able to apply. You got to select roads and do that. You can do that before you apply. Now, surveys are only good for two years. So if you do water line surveys and you don't apply, you got to apply next year. Your survey's no good. So, um, there is, um, there is no reason unforeseeing some major disaster that we cannot start the process, make the application, because the application's not due until February twenty-eighth of 2021. So if we don't do something this year, we've got to wait. So if we don't do something this year, we've got to wait all the way to February 2022, which means we've missed out on four years, because we've already missed out on two, not missed out, we're doing a grant now, but we received notification from the state of Tennessee that we received the current grant that we have right now in July of 2018. It is day after tomorrow, July of 2020. Some of these take a while. You know, I'm not pointing fingers, laying blame, but I move to amend this budget by $400,000 to be included and set aside in the Capital Projects Fund for Grant Match. I request those funds be taken from one of two places. Hospital Fund Interest or Hospital Fund General Balance, which is estimated right now over $8 million. I think in next year, in this document, it's estimated at over $9 million. That fund, I requested through the budget process, $7 million. But we're going to have a committee, and I appreciate that, appreciate the ad hoc committee. That's going to be a great place for us to work through this. So we just can't, we can't wait. These people, I mean, they just can't wait. So that's my amendment.
Okay, so motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor to add $400,000 to the budget out of, excuse me, Hospital Fund Interest. What was the other part, Mr. Taylor?
Or the General Hospital Fund.
Or the Hospital Fund. Yeah, okay.
Either or, and we can clarify that right now. Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, all right. Motion made by Mr. Mo Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield. Mr. Becker?
I was going to ask if the Finance Director can sort of give us a summary or whatever of the Hospital Fund situation.
Currently, the Hospital Fund shows estimated at the end of the fiscal year about $9.4 million, but $800,000 of that is in the form of a note that is still waiting of property exchange to be written off. The actual interest earnings this year are just a little bit over of what's being paid to Ford Sumner. I believe the total, paid for Ford Sumner is about $100,000 for economic development, and the total interest earnings on that fund is... First mask is making it hard to find the revenue. The interest earnings are somewhere around $127,000. So there's about $27,000 more interest earnings coming in than we're paying out currently. So if it was to be paid from the Hospital Fund, the majority of that will come from the principal of the Hospital Fund, and it's also in the general fund, so it would have to be appropriated through the general fund, or would need to be.
Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Yeah, so $100 and something from interest and the rest from the general fund. I'm fine with doing it that way, you know, the interest, and then take the rest of it from the county gen, I mean, the Hospital Funds, because I had somebody from Westmoreland ask me to make this statement. Our doctor, our longtime doctor, Dr. Carter, was instrumental in the Sumner County General Hospital, so I don't think he'd have a problem with this. Thank you.
There's probably $27,000 allocated here. One, one twenty-seven, a hundred thousand been allocated to Ford Sumner. About $27,000.
All right, Mr. Comenden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to see this go through the committee that's being set up, that system. I encounter people, have a few that I know, and I've asked, especially one person in particular on a road up next to the Kentucky line, didn't they have city water going by there, where I noticed they had just dug a well, and they spent $7,000 or $8,000 on a well, and also on water conditioning equipment? When city water ran right by there, has just been laid, the line has just been laid, and I would like to request at some point, I'd like to see a map before that we do things like this, and I would like to know how many people along that route are actually going to tap onto the water and pay a water bill, and would like to see from whoever the provider is that they would provide that water also. And as I've stated before in the past, I'm all for people having city water and plenty of water. When my wife and I first got married, I've told this story before, and I'm going to tell it again. We built a house on a family farm, and we dug a well, $600 and something dollars, it was, and it was money that we didn't even have, but we dug a well, and it was dry, and we wound up laying a water line 1,500 feet down a creek bluff and put a pump in a branch. And I've had several times that I come in from hauling hay or cutting tobacco and get all soaked up in the shower, and the water go off, and you have to put your clothes back on, get your shotgun, and go down there and see what's wrong with the pump and a flashlight. And so I'm all for them having water, but I'd also like to know that people along these routes are going to take the water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comenden. Mr. Graves?
Well, we've been doing this about 10 years, roughly, and I don't feel like that no particular line, they have, it has been beneficial to the citizens of this county. And if, I am not going to tell my story again about outdoor toilet, but anyway, it's beneficial to the citizens of this county, in the rural area mostly. That's the process that we went through every time we ever done this, is pick water, roads that's most financially feasible to do this with. Now, being on the board of Castane Springs Bethpage Utility, yes, we still got some, but last time, I think we let the Westmoreland District, we bypassed, because we'd done some work through the utility last time. But we will be getting a list of roads through that utility, and I'm sure Westmoreland and Portland, probably maybe White House, I doubt it, but we'll be getting a list together and telling how many people has that opportunity to have that. Now, we can't make them take that water, but a lot of them would appreciate if they had city water running in front of their house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Yes, sir. And, you know, I have no problem with information being provided, but, you know, to not try to do something just because people don't take it. I mean, you can take, you can lead a horse to water, as they say, but you can't make him drink, I don't care how hard you try. So, I mean, that's, this isn't, you know, this isn't just a won't, it's a necessity, and I think we all know that. And another reason I did this is because I've sat through budget meeting after budget meeting after budget meeting and heard people get criticized and ridiculed, maybe not ridiculed, but they didn't like it because we come before the budget committee when something happened. So that's why I'm doing it right now. We're in the budget process for the budget year 2021.
Okay.
And this, you know, we set policies and rules in the past about budget requests, so that's why I'm doing it right now. This is where we set the 2021 budget. So just to clarify, I'm trying to play within the rules that you asked me to play. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Hinton?
Would it be possible, and how much trouble would it be, and how expensive, to find out of the water lines we've laid in the last five years over there? What percentage of the houses hooked on?
Mr. Hinton, I can answer part of that question. One of the things that came up in researching all of this to find out was that the last one we did that was towards Westmoreland, there's a survey that's sent out obviously beforehand, and so many houses have to agree to tap into the line before they'll be willing to give us the grant for it. There were so few that actually wanted to do it and then actually tapped into it that we had to go back and justify to the state a second time why we did it, and we were somewhat accused a little bit of maybe fudging the numbers, because they were a little incredulous with us that we'd had such low participation in that one. They obviously worked through it and got it right, but that's why, again, we don't want to go forward until we know we've got the surveys done, we've got everything done. There's money in the reserves, but that's where this money's coming from, is the reserves, and that's what everybody needs to understand is, if we decide halfway through the year that all of a sudden this state offers a fantastic grant, if we have to with reserves, this body could easily vote then to do it, but there's nothing for us to apply for right now. There's no grants that are applicable. I've talked with Ms. Ark, she has verified it with the state. I've talked with Ms. Denham. There's nothing for us to do to move forward. You can say we can, but we can't. Otherwise, we'd be trying to do it. That's why we're setting up this committee next month to start getting the preliminary work done, which is to get surveys, to contact utility districts. I showed you the respect.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor, I showed you the respect. Let me finish.
Mr. Taylor, let him finish. No, sit down. You're done, you're done, you're done. You're not going to challenge his veracity. He can finish. I'll let you talk.
When we get down, when we meet next month, we've got to get all the preliminary work done, which is get the surveys, get with the utility companies, get everything established, then we can try and see what grants are even applicable. Anyone that's, anyone we can get, we're going to try, obviously. This county's always done that, at least for the past five years, and I think longer than that, but there's nothing to get right now.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Hang on, Commissioner Mo Taylor, hang on one second. Mr. Hinton still had the floor. Let me come back to you in just a second.
If my memory serves me correctly, and I think Mr. Comenden will agree with this, that before we got water where I live, the citizenry had to sign up and commit to take it before they would, and I'm not too sure it wasn't the same with natural gas. And I'd always thought that that was the normal procedure, if you could get the demand. I expect if you go to White House, maybe not now since Mr. Kramer's gone, but I expect one time in the world, if you wanted water and you went to White House, he'd have to know of a list and how many people would take this before he'd put forth the effort to put it through. I don't think that's, I don't think that's an unreasonable thing. I think it's, I think it's information, whether we changed our minds or went forward or went faster or slower, I think it's information that this body ought to set about to collect is how many people, when we put in, when we spend this money, and it's taxpayer money if it's ours or if it comes from a grant, it comes from somebody else's taxpayer, you know? But we ought to know, we ought to know what, how many people is taking advantage of this if we're going to do it. Thank you.
Commissioner Chris Taylor, could you explain the ad hoc committee that you've created?
Yes, sir. Next month, actually at 5 o'clock, myself, Mr. Mansfield, Mr. Graves, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Wright will be meeting, and what we're going to do is we're going to start establishing the protocols and get everything going. That way, if we do ever have the opportunity for any grant, we'll have already done all the legwork and get it done, so anytime the state's willing to throw away money, as far as that goes, we're going to be in first in line. And by that, I mean, if somebody else doesn't have their stuff in line, say Williamson County's not really ready, we're going to constantly remind them that we've got X number of homes, X number of residences, X number of streets, because we're going to have it all lined up, right?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Yes, sir. And once again, to clarify what I said to start with, and I forwarded emails, the two or three or five emails I have, there is something that we can't apply for, yet right now, right this minute, there's not. That's why I just tried to clarify what I'm trying to do. We've done this in the past, you can ask the Finance Director. We've set aside funds to be able to make the grant application when it comes, and this is the time and place where we did that, for years. Year before last, when Chairman Pomeroy was the budget chairman, it was taken out, and he, because we were in the process of a grant or applying for one, and he told me that he assured me that it would be put in the next year. Well, he didn't get elected, reelected, so last year, I tried to have it put in again. It got took out. This year, tried to have it put in. It got took out. So I don't have no problem, and I'm not trying to offer unfactual information. I got, it's GNRC and the state of Tennessee emails that says you can do the work. They want a commitment of allocated funds even before you apply. You have to have the money allocated to be able to apply or set aside. Maybe not allocated is the proper word. So voted up or down? And I'm the maker of the amendment, so I can close debate on this by calling a question.
Okay. Mr. Taylor's called the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Nipper. All right, a yes vote is to end debate, a no vote is to continue debate. We'll give Mr. Kemp a second to get it up.
All right, vote on the question is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Here, yes. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear your vote, Mr. Graves.
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Graves. Mr. Comenden?
Yes.
All right. Motion passed, motion to call the question passes unanimously, so we are on Mr. Taylor's amendment, which is to add $400,000 in for, to pursue water lines in the rural, in Westmoreland Bethpage area.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The amendment's on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. I'm sorry, I started the vote. 10 seconds.
I don't care where it's at.
Okay, rural areas of the county, wherever it is in the county.
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield is a yes. Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves is a yes. Mr. Comenden?
No.
Okay, Mr. Comenden is a no.
I'm all for no.
Ms. Echols is also a no.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
But I did not show either.
Okay, Mr. Wright is a yes.
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of seven to 16, the amendment fails. We're back on the main motion. Mr. Foster, you're next in the queue.
No.
Okay, all right. Mayor Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to reaffirm my office's commitment to apply for grants for water lines through the county, and I assure you that whether the money has been appropriated now or later, we will be applying for another round of CDVG grants once this process has been completed, and we will come back to the commission for your consideration of a match. So this doesn't change anything, and without that process, it wouldn't get done anyway, and just want to commend Ms. Ark, our grant writer, on the great work she does. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Mr. Graves, are you on the main motion?
Yes.
I'd just like to see us keep the horse in front of the cart one time, and just go ahead and fund this $400,000, and if we don't, if this don't work out like the Commissioner Taylor said, then that $400,000,000 would just be sitting there till the next opportunity we have, or it's taken out again, because it was already in the budget a couple of years ago.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Back to the main motion, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Main motion.
Main motion, yes, sir.
The main.
We're on the main motion, yes, sir.
Millions and millions of dollars. Budgets, right?
Yes.
School combined with county general. Okay, just making sure.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield?
No, uh-uh, I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
No, not hardly.
All right, well, again, get there. Let's cut the rhetoric and the histrionics. Let's move on to your point.
Well, I can't see you, so I don't know what's going on, so.
Well, go ahead. Well, go ahead. Continue. You got the floor.
I, you know, I got quite a bit of concern over this budget. Quite a bit of concern. I mean, we've raised people's taxes twice in less than five years, and we, we had, you know, we had a stuff sent to us last week that's a last minute for the ECC Center, and I'm not personally speaking against anybody.
Yeah, I'm going to, Mr. Let's figure the floor. You interrupt.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
I can go on now?
Yes, sir.
Well, we got this request last week, and I, you know, I reached out to some other people in the cities, and, you know, I got people from the cities telling me they're tired. They're tired of continually being asked to belly up to the bar, so to say, to keep throwing money at the emergency communication center. I know, that's not personal. My, my, you know, phrase of throwing money. I'm not personally trying to attack anybody, not trying to break a rule, but we got, we got county employees, and we got employees in the school system. City, I talked to a city employee today. He, he was fired up. He's not going to get a raise, but people, you know, were throwing money at the emergency communication center. So, and another thing in the budget, we're, we growed our government last year by, I forget how many positions, and that's new positions. Well, we, and in those positions, we, you know, we, revenue was supposed to come with those, a lot of those positions. Well, it's not there. I understand they all went higher. A lot of them were. You know, the revenue doesn't touch what we were told. Look at the reduction in the revenue for county services. I understand pandemic stuff, but a lot of this stuff, you know, they, very few builders out there driving nails has quit building houses during the pandemic. Now, they might, they might have run into trouble with supplies, but we're asking, you know, and we're giving money, not giving people raises, growing budgets. With the money that was sent out last week about the emergency communication center, that's going to put this budget over $4 million.
Sir, with all due respect, point of clarification, is there a motion so I can start getting the numbers ready for what it is?
Why do I keep getting interrupted? You want me to go on?
Hold on.
I can get done a lot quicker if you quit interrupting me. What about that?
All right. I'm going to encourage everyone to address your comments to the chair and stop.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, will you let me finish, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, you have the floor. I ask that you, you've mentioned the ECC Center like three times, so I ask you to move on. You've made your point.
They told me if you mentioned it nine, you'd get the point, but I will go on. The, you know, our taxpayers are hurting, and also, I'll go to another one, judicial center. We got bonds to talk about.
Mr. Taylor, there's nothing in this, in this resolution connected to the capital project on the just, on the judicial center? I'd ask you to move on.
Uh, yeah, there is. There, it's all in there. It's in the front pages. It's, it's, it's the stuff that we've approved, so much for county general and so much for the judicial center.
The judicial center's a capital project funded out of a bond.
Which is in this budget, which is part of this budget, so it's in there.
Move on. You're out of order.
All right. All right. Revenues from the, all the judicial offices, all the judges, reducing again this year. The revenue projections are down once again this year. I went last year on the squire and spoke with the county court clerk, asking about why the revenues are continually declining in the court systems. Well, it's, it's happening nationally, but we're going to spend that kind of money to build a new judicial center? I don't get it. I don't get it. So, you know, you've already banged me and gavelled me and done all this.
Mr. Taylor, move on. Get to your point.
Uh, okay. My point is, I'm going to move to recall the bonds.
That's an inappropriate motion. It's not on the agenda tonight. You can't recall the bond. It's already been approved.
It's part of the agenda.
No, it's not part of the agenda. You're out of order. Move on.
Well, I'm going to move to table the budget.
To table the what? I'm sorry. I couldn't hear.
The, the budget.
Okay. Motion to table the budget made by Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mansfield. Okay. You got 16 votes to table the budget, so a yes vote is, is to table the budget. A no vote is to continue on with the resolution, the budget resolution. And there's no debate on this one? There's no debate on this? Okay.
Motion to table is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Mr. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Mansfield is a yes on the motion. Mr. Graves.
No.
Mr. Graves is a no on the motion. Mr. Comenden.
No.
Mr. Comenden is a no on the motion.
Two to 21.
Okay. By a vote of 21, or excuse me, by two affirmative, 21 negative, the, the motion to table fails. Back to the main motion. Commissioner Chris Taylor, then we'll go to Mr. Mansfield.
Call the question on the main motion, sir.
Okay. Motion's been, question's been called. A yes vote is to end debate. A no vote is to continue debate. Oh, no. Is there a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Nipper.
All right. The call for the question is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay. Mr. Mansfield.
No.
No on ending debate. Mr. Graves.
No.
Mr. Graves is a no. Mr. Comenden.
Yes.
Okay.
Seventeen to six.
Okay. Set by a vote of 17 to six, debate is ended. We will now vote on the main resolution, which is 2006 dash zero four.
Mr. Long would also want to make sure that it is including the money to be, Mr. Long want to make sure we did state that it was including the money to be encumbered for ECC.
Yes. That was included in the original motion. Okay.
The ECC.
The ECC money is encumbered until, it's encumbered in the budget until it comes back through budget, and we vote up or down on whether to approve that much. If you remember, Commissioner Taylor, I think it was about an hour ago, was explaining that. You got, okay. All right. All right. As the finance director described, yes.
Okay. Resolution 2006 dash zero four is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay. Commissioner Mansfield.
No.
Commissioner Mansfield is a no. Mr. Graves?
No.
Mr. Graves is a no. Mr. Comenden?
Yes.
Mr. Comenden is a yes. By a vote of 18 to five, 2006 dash oh four passes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. What's your objection?
The, the.
That is quite a.
Direct and indirect conflict of interest.
Okay. Yeah. Mr. Taylor, can you cue your mic?
Yes, sir. I object due to the cause of the direct or indirect conflict of interest not being declared. I would like this filed within the minutes, and also like it addressed in the future by committee.
All right. I will direct the law director to, to look into that and give us a report in legislative, and we will note that objection in the minutes from Commissioner Mo Taylor. All right. Mr. Tay, Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Yes, sir. We will no longer need 2006 oh six, which would have been a continuation budget. Instead, we'll go to 2006 oh seven, which is approving a transfer between major categories of $368,382 within capital projects fund from the courthouse contingency for jail pods. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, I'll just ask for a little background, a little clarification of what, what's going on with this one.
I'll defer to Mr. Long on this one.
Can you sit down, Mr. Long? Sorry.
He's forgetting, sorry. It's a habit. It's part of the original amount approved for the new jail pod, the demolition, the architecture for the parking garage. They were all one project, and then there was $500,000 contingency, so the contingency was set aside. Part of the contingencies had to be used on the jail pod, so it's being moved over to the correct major category to be used on the jail pods. But it was originally 500,000. It's just been allocated to be used.
Okay. All right. I see no, no one else in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay. Mr. Mansfield.
I will be a no, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mansfield's a no. Mr. Graves? What's that? Mr. Graves is a yes. Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Comenden?
Yes.
Mr. Comenden is a yes. Thank you, Mr. Comenden. By a vote of 21 to two, the motion passes. Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Yes, sir. 2006 dash oh eight appropriating $6,2,792 as pass-through funds for state inmate medical reimbursements to the budget of the Sumter County Sheriff's Office. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Echols. See no one in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay. Commissioner Mansfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Mansfield is a yes. Commissioner Graves?
Yes.
Commissioner Graves is a yes. Mr. Comenden? Mr. Comenden is, is a yes. By a vote of 23 to zero, motion passes unanimously.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Taylor.
2006 dash oh nine appropriating $86,351.24 as pass-through funds for state inmate medical reimbursement to the budget of the Sumter County Sheriff's Office. I so move, sir.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's take 10. Without objections, let's take a 10-minute recess.
I really appreciate the county commission giving me an opportunity to present this information to you all this evening. As we've said earlier, this is a long, long time coming, been a work in progress. This is something that, over the last 40 years approximately, there's been a bunch of runs at doing this, and it's always just not made it over the finish line. And so what I want to do tonight is really lay out a case, really showing you what we're working with now, what we're proposing to have to work with, and hopefully make the case that what we're proposing is better. So, this presentation is going to seek to accomplish two things. Number one, it's going to lay out all the weaknesses, as I perceive them, as a lot of other folks perceive them, of the existing zoning resolution. The bottom line on that, what we have on the books today, I can't do my job. That's the bottom line. I can't do my job, my staff can't do their job. The staff at Building Codes can't do their job. It's a document that doesn't make any sense. It's a document that is outdated. It's a document that, just bottom line, doesn't allow us to be able to effectively do our jobs in a way that we feel like we're operating within the bounds of the law. Number two, I'm going to hopefully provide an overview of the proposed zoning resolution and talk about ways that we're trying to address those changes, or address future challenges. And so the bottom line there is these proposed changes are going to create a new framework that are going to meet basic thresholds for legality, which is very important, and will protect county residents, their biggest investment, which is their homes and property. You have to have zoning in order to protect existing residents from new development and changes that come with growth. 30,000-foot view, the things I want you all to take away from this, agricultural uses are not affected in any way. Keeping of livestock, raising of crops, those are totally protected by state law. Counties are explicitly forbidden from regulating those things. Cities can, counties can't. We don't. Legal existing uses are not affected in any way. So if somebody has a permit for something that's going on right now, it's going to be honored. And so the term for that that people use a lot is grandfathered. It's going to be grandfathered in. If you have a legal business, a legal zoning entitlement, a legal subdivision, it's going to be honored. Excluding the appendices, the new zoning resolution and the old zoning resolution, they're of roughly similar length. The new one without the appendices, which is things like a listing of uses, and it goes on pages and pages and pages, it's 274 pages. The old one's 229. That's different than what you might see on the county website. It's because the one on the county website's wrong. I found three chapters that aren't in the official document. I went going through old minutes. The things I'm trying to harp on here is that what we have is incomplete, it's not functional. So with those three chapters that I've been able to find, it actually comes to around 230 pages.
Let's take 10. Without objection, let's take a 10-minute recess.
Thank you.
I think. All right. So, the remainder of our meeting consists of this. Mr. Suddith is going to give us a presentation on the zoning document and the proposed changes. Then we'll have public comments, and then we will debate 2006-10. So, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Suddith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kim, with there being a way that I could get my screen up there on the big screen. There we go. Thanks, sir. I really appreciate the county commission giving me an opportunity to present this information to you all this evening. As we've said earlier, this is a long, long time coming, been a work in progress. This is something that, over the last 40 years approximately, there's been a bunch of runs at doing this, and it's always just not made it over the finish line. And so what I want to do tonight is really lay out a case, really showing you what we're working with now, what we're proposing to have to work with, and hopefully make the case that what we're proposing is better. So, this presentation is going to seek to accomplish two things. Number one, it's going to lay out all the weaknesses, as I perceive them, as a lot of other folks perceive them, of the existing zoning resolution. The bottom line on that, what we have on the books today, I can't do my job. That's the bottom line. I can't do my job, my staff can't do their job. The staff at Building Codes can't do their job. It's a document that doesn't make any sense. It's a document that is outdated. It's a document that, just bottom line, doesn't allow us to be able to effectively do our jobs in a way that we feel like we're operating within the bounds of the law. Number two, I'm going to hopefully provide an overview of the proposed zoning resolution and talk about ways that we're trying to address those changes, or address future challenges. And so the bottom line there is these proposed changes are going to create a new framework that are going to meet basic thresholds for legality, which is very important, and will protect county residents, their biggest investment, which is their homes and property. You have to have zoning in order to protect existing residents from new development and changes that come with growth. 30,000-foot view, the things I want you all to take away from this, agricultural uses are not affected in any way. Keeping of livestock, raising of crops, those are totally protected by state law. Counties are explicitly forbidden from regulating those things. Cities can, counties can't. We don't. Legal existing uses are not affected in any way. So if somebody has a permit for something that's going on right now, it's going to be honored. And so the term for that that people use a lot is grandfathered. It's going to be grandfathered in. If you have a legal business, a legal zoning entitlement, a legal subdivision, it's going to be honored. Excluding the appendices, the new zoning resolution and the old zoning resolution, they're of roughly similar length. The new one without the appendices, which is things like a listing of uses, and it goes on pages and pages and pages, it's 274 pages. The old one's 229. That's different than what you might see on the county website. It's because the one on the county website's wrong. I found three chapters that aren't in the official document. I went going through old minutes. The things I'm trying to harp on here is that what we have is incomplete, it's not functional. So with those three chapters that I've been able to find, it actually comes to around 230 pages. The last thing, the proposed zoning resolution, it's going to greatly increase the authority of the county commission over what you have now, and determine on a case-by-case basis what acceptable land uses are. You guys don't have a whole lot of say in that right now. That's just the way it is. There's a lot of things that you guys come to me and don't like that go on in the county. There's a bunch of those that now you're going to have the right to say no to, because they're going to have to come to you for approval. Some of those duplexes are allowed everywhere in the county right now. By right, you can just go build them. Multifamily development is allowed in about 60% of the county by right. You can just go do it. Mobile home parks are allowed, you just go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and get an approval. Now you have to go to the county commission to do any of those. You're going to have to rezone the property if this passes. And then, as far as county authority, the county commission's authority is going to extend into the municipal planning regions as well, because this action, if the zoning map is approved, is going to bring the municipal planning regions under the jurisdiction of the county commission and not under the city councils and those elected bodies of the cities. So some background on the existing zoning code. It was adopted in July of 1973. It's been amended and tweaked over the years. The current official copy has got issues that tend to cause a lot of problems from the staff perspective. We don't know what to do. That's the, we don't, we see situations and we don't know what to do. Historically, staff in some instances has just had to make it up. You just have to make it up, because the code doesn't give you any guidance. And that places the county at a lot of risk when you have to do that. The judges and the courts won't back you up there. So we looked at, can we fix what we got right now? Is there a way to go into this document, tweak it, make some changes here and there to make it, to bring it up to standard? We looked at it, it just, there was no way to do it. There's really no way to do it. It's, doing a zoning code is kind of like doing a Rubik's Cube. You move one block here, it changes things on the other side of it. So, we looked at all the things that are missing, everything from sign regulations to site plan review standards to just any number of things. Getting all those things fixed was going to require a rewrite of the whole thing anyway, so that's what we did. We're not alone here. We're the last county standing. Everybody else has already done this a long time ago. This is not something that, like I said earlier, Sumter County is an outlier here. This is, everybody else has addressed their codes and has totally updated them in the last decade. Rutherford County did theirs in 2012. Williamson County did theirs in 2012 and paid a consultant several hundred thousand dollars to do it. And Montgomery County updated theirs comprehensively in 2016. So, the obvious issues with the official document, when you look at it, it's not an editable document, it's a scanned JPEG. And so when you try to convert that, for anybody that knows about converting PDF documents and that kind of thing, you try to convert it, it's jumbled. It's illegible. It's got a lot of symbols and weird things in there, so you can't scan it, you can't edit it and work with it. And that's why, over the years, it's just become a frozen document. It's kind of frozen in amber with a lot of handwritten notes and that kind of stuff. It's not searchable. So if you're looking for a specific section of the code, you can't find it, because you can't look for words in there. For people that are tech savvy at all, that's a huge plus to be able to search through the document and find exactly what you're looking for. It took me about a year to figure out where everything was. And just a remarkable number of typos and misspellings and sentence fragments, it's really remarkable, all the little things like that that are wrong with it, that are just embarrassing. They're just embarrassing when you're dealing with a professional developer that's coming here from out of state, or that's local, or whatever, or one of your peers in one of the other cities, to show them the stuff that you have to work with. It's just a little embarrassing. So, just these obvious issues, handwritten notes, these are all over. You can see where, back in 2010, they penciled this in, and whiteout was used here on something. You see that all over the code, where they just wrote in wording that the county commission had changed at some point, as opposed to editing the document. Crossed out pages like this, this is the official document, this is what's on the website. Obsolete language, it's not been called the county court, the county commission hasn't in a long time. It's still referred to by the county court throughout the document in various places. Some things I like to call head-scratchers. It talks about 18 districts here. There's only 16, so I've not been able to figure out where the other two are, if there were 18 at some point. This is something here, this is very important. It tells you about prior approvals and that kind of thing. It references this Section 14803. It doesn't exist. It doesn't, it's not, it's not something that is in any document that I can find that the county actually has. So that's no good. Deeper issues, though, that's all superficial stuff. The real deep issues, the requirements and the verbiage are contradictory. You've got at least two or three different sets of definitions in the code that all say that they rule. So I've got two or three different definitions of the term "front yard." And so, that makes it very difficult to interpret when people are wanting to put a structure somewhere, how to interpret it, and where they can put it and where they can't. That seems minor, but if you work in codes or you work in planning, that is what you deal with a lot. Vague, non-existent sign regulations. We don't have a sign permitting process in Sumter County. It doesn't exist. The sign provisions that we have, I've talked with our law director, it will be my opinion that they're unconstitutional. There's a prohibition on commercial speech per our zoning code that will not hold up in court. Commercial and industrial site plan review standards really don't exist. There's not any. And so when I have a commercial developer that wants to come and talk about doing something in Sumter County, I don't have any standards to show them what they need to do, because they don't exist, and I can't just make them up. That's not the way it works. Unenforceable landscaping requirements. So when somebody comes in and does a commercial or industrial development, there's nothing there, and there's a lot of mayes. So they may, the developer may do this, the developer may do that. And so they've just been ignored over the years. So you see a lot of commercial development that's happened over the decades that doesn't have any landscaping. That's one of the reasons why. They're not required to turn in any plans for it. Neighborhood meetings aren't required for rezonings, which is, I've never seen that before. Every other jurisdiction I've ever seen requires those. And there's no criteria for a proposed rezoning. So when somebody wants to rezone property, there's no criteria they have to meet to say this is a good rezoning or this is a bad rezoning. That's a big problem, because the county commission has nothing to judge it against. Traffic impact studies, they're not a requirement for any application of any size. We ask for them sometimes, and we get them sometimes, but there's nothing in there to really say when you need one. Planning regions, I'm going to talk more about this here in a minute, but right now the city is zoned outside of their city limits. One good one is the White House Planning Region. Back 10 or 15 years ago, 20 years ago, the county commission took away the White House Planning Region zoning authority. It's great, but nothing was ever put back in its place. So there is no zoning for the White House Planning Region right now. It doesn't have zoning, as far as I can tell. Duplexes, multifamily development are allowed by right in most parts of the county. All they have to do is pull a building permit on the duplexes. Other big issues, I've never quite seen this before, zoning district boundaries follow old, they follow topo lines, and so you have lots with split zoning. So when somebody wants to put a structure somewhere, it's very difficult to figure out exactly what requirements they have to meet. This is another one here. This is a subdivision. This site is agricultural. I'm going to talk about the agricultural zone. It doesn't mean what you think it does. It's a residential zone, the way that it is right now, and it's got split zoning where these lots have zoning running through the middle of them. It's very hard to tell exactly what they need to do when they come in. Usually, your zoning is an entire lot. It follows lot lines and not topo lines like this, so that's pretty unusual. Things that go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they get these things called special exceptions, and so that's when something's by appeal to the BZA. Some of the commission members have come to the BZA meetings, and they've heard me talk about if the applicant meets the requirements, it must be approved. That's what the judges have told us, and that's what the courts hold. But what the courts also say is they have to meet every single criteria that's in there. And what that means, you have to spell things out in a lot of detail if you're going to allow it upon appeal to the BZA. One of the big issues with our current code, basically, is that there's no detail. It just says it's allowed upon appeal, it goes to the BZA, it must be approved. That's about all there is to it. The proposed changes, as I'll get into later on, they do try to rectify that, provide a lot more criteria for uses that come to the BZA. This right here is language from the Residential A District, but it applies to Residential B, Residential 1A, and the agricultural districts. It, that's about, that's virtually the entire unincorporated area. Uses permitted, as I said, single-family, two-family dwellings permitted upon appeal, multifamily dwellings, there's no, there's no criteria for that, though, in the code. So like I said, you go to the BZA, you want to do it, you can do it. So, from the current Ag District right now, the agricultural district, what it says is everything you can do in Residential A, you can do in agricultural. And so agricultural is well over half the entire county, cities included, so you can do duplexes, multifamily developments, no appeal. It allows for a very wide variety of very intense uses. Most subdivisions that come to the planning commission are agricultural. A lot of people don't understand that, but just because you live in the agricultural zone has nothing to do with actually being agricultural. And as I said, counties can't do anything about agricultural activities. We can't regulate them if you're growing crops or raising livestock and that kind of thing. So this right here is from the Ag District. You can do any number of commercial uses. You can go do a self-service laundry, beauty shops, personal service establishments, drug stores, Walgreens or whatever, grocery stores. They just go to the BZA and they can get approved if they want to. There's really no criteria. Sanitary landfills are allowed in the agricultural district, which is most of the county, as I said, and junkyards as well. Deeper issues, continuing all of that thing, planning regions. Going back to 1973, the planning regions were set up, that basically allowed Galatin, Hendersonville, Portland, White House to zone outside of their city limits. The county adopted zoning soon after that for everything except those planning regions, and so they still stand to this day where the cities have zoning there. This is Galatins, in the green. This is Hendersonville's in the red. This is Portland's in purple here. It's pretty large. One thing that has been noted is Portland's urban growth boundary is larger than the city of Clarksville, which has over 100,000 people. White House, we don't really know if it has zoning authority or not. This, the changes would fix that, but it's kind of, it's a no-man's land right now, and we don't know what to do there at all. County overall, you can see the planning region is depicted there. So what's everybody's responsibility in the planning regions? The cities, basically, they treat them just like they're in the city. It's, you're in the city effectively for all regulatory purposes, you just don't pay city property taxes. In the county, what do we have to do in the planning regions? We have to enforce the stormwater regulations. We have to review their plans, we have to get the complaints, we have to go and do inspections and all that stuff. And whether, even though the cities have zoning authority there, we have to do this. The cities are not allowed to do it. TDEC won't let them. And of course, we maintain the roads in the planning region as well. The county road superintendent has to do that. So, extraterritorial zoning, zoning in the planning regions, how common is that? There's 356 incorporated cities in the state. There's 16 cities in the whole state that do it. Three of them are in Sumter County, the rest are in West Tennessee. For people that are tech savvy at all, that's a huge plus to be able to search through the document and find exactly what you're looking for. It took me about a year to figure out where everything was. And just a remarkable number of typos and misspellings and sentence fragments. It's really remarkable, all the little things like that that are wrong with it. They're just embarrassing. They're just embarrassing when you're dealing with a professional developer that's coming here from out of state or that's local or whatever, or one of your peers in one of the other cities to show them the stuff that you have to work with. It's just a little embarrassing. So just these obvious issues, handwritten notes, these are all over. You can see where back in 2010, they penciled this in and whiteout was used here on something. You see that all over the code where they just wrote in wording that the county commission had changed at some point as opposed to editing the document. Crossed out pages like this, this is the official document. This is what's on the website. Obsolete language. It's not been called the county court. The county commission hasn't in a long time. It's still referred to by the county court throughout the document in various places. Some things I like to call head scratchers. It talks about 18 districts here. There's only 16, so I've not been able to figure out where the other two are or if there were 18 at some point. This is something here, this is very important. It tells you about prior approvals and that kind of thing. It references this Section 14803. It doesn't exist. It doesn't, it's not something that is in any document that I can find that the county actually has. So that's no good. Deeper issues though, that's all superficial stuff. The real deep issues, the requirements and the verbiage are contradictory. You've got at least two or three different sets of definitions in the code that all say that they rule. So I've got two or three different definitions of the term front yard. And so that makes it very difficult to interpret when people want to put a structure somewhere, how to interpret it and where they can put it and where they can't. That seems minor, but if you work in codes or you work in planning, that is what you deal with a lot. Vague, non-existent sign regulations. We don't have a sign permitting process in Sunder County. It doesn't exist. The sign provisions that we have, I've talked with our law director, it will be my opinion that they're unconstitutional. There's a prohibition on commercial speech per our zoning code that will not hold up in court. Commercial and industrial site plan review standards really don't exist. There's not any. And so when I have a commercial developer that wants to come and talk about doing something in Sunder County, I don't have any standards to show them what they need to do because they don't exist and I can't just make them up. That's not the way it works. Unenforceable landscaping requirements. So when somebody comes in and does a commercial or industrial development, there's nothing there and there's a lot of mayes. So they may, the developer may do this, the developer may do that. And so they've just been ignored over the years. So you see a lot of commercial development that's happened over the decades that doesn't have any landscaping. And that's one of the reasons why. They're not required to turn in any plans for it. Neighborhood meetings aren't required for rezonings, which is, I've never seen that before. Every other jurisdiction I've ever seen requires those. And there's no criteria for a proposed rezoning. So when somebody wants to rezone property, there's no criteria they have to meet to say, this is a good rezoning or this is a bad rezoning. That's a big problem because the county commission has nothing to judge it against. Traffic impact studies, they're not a requirement for any application of any size. We ask for them sometimes and we get them sometimes, but there's nothing in there to really say when you need one. Planning regions, I'm going to talk more about this here in a minute, but right now the city is zoned outside of their city limits. One good one is the White House planning region. Back 10 or 15 years ago, 20 years ago, the county commission took away the White House planning region zoning authority. It's great, but nothing was ever put back in its place. So there is no zoning for the White House planning region right now. It doesn't have zoning as far as I can tell. Duplexes, multifamily development are allowed by right in most parts of the county. All they have to do is pull a building permit on the duplexes. Other big issues, I've never quite seen this before. Zoning district boundaries follow, they follow topo lines. And so you have lots with split zoning. So when somebody wants to put a structure somewhere, it's very difficult to figure out exactly what requirements they have to meet. This is another one here. This is a subdivision. This side is agricultural. I'm going to talk about the agricultural zone. It doesn't mean what you think it does. It's a residential zone, the way that it is right now. And it's got split zoning where these lots have zoning running through the middle of them. It's very hard to tell exactly what they need to do when they come in. Usually your zoning is an entire lot. It follows lot lines and not topo lines like this. So that's pretty unusual. Things that go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they get these things called special exceptions. And so that's when something's by appeal to the BZA. Some of the commission members have come to the BZA meetings and they've heard me talk about if the applicant meets the requirements, it must be approved. That's what the judges have told us and that's what the courts hold. But what the courts also say is they have to meet every single criteria that's in there. And what that means, you have to spell things out in a lot of detail if you're going to allow it upon appeal to the BZA. One of the big issues with our current code basically is that there's no detail. It just says it's allowed upon appeal. It goes to the BZA, it must be approved. That's about all there is to it. The proposed changes, as I'll get into later on, they do try to rectify that and provide a lot more criteria for uses that come to the BZA. This right here is language from the residential A district, but it applies to residential B, residential 1A, and the agricultural districts. That's about, that's virtually the entire unincorporated area. Uses permitted, as I said, single family, two family dwellings permitted upon appeal, multifamily dwellings, there's no, there's no criteria for that though in the code. So like I said, you go to the BZA, you want to do it, you can do it. So from the current ag district right now, the agricultural district, what it says is everything you can do in residential A, you can do in agricultural. And so agricultural is well over half the entire county, cities included. So you can do duplexes, multifamily developments, no appeal. It allows for a very wide variety of very intense uses. Most subdivisions that come to the planning commission are agricultural. A lot of people don't understand that, but just because you live in the agricultural zone has nothing to do with actually being agricultural. And as I said, counties can't do anything about agricultural activities. We can't regulate them if you're growing crops or raising livestock and that kind of thing. So this right here is from the ag district. You can do any number of commercial uses. You can go do a self-service laundry, beauty shops, personal service establishments, drug stores, Walgreens or whatever, grocery stores. They just go to the BZA and they can get approved if they want to. There's really no criteria. Sanitary landfills are allowed in the agricultural district, which is most of the county as I said, and junkyards as well. Deeper issues, continuing on with that thing, planning regions. Going back to 1973, the planning regions were set up that basically allowed Galatin, Hendersonville, Portland White House to zone outside of their city limits. County adopted zoning soon after that for everything except those planning regions. And so they still stand to this day where the cities have zoning there. This is Galatans in the green. This is Hendersonville's in the red. This is Portland's in purple here. It's pretty large. One thing that has been noted is Portland's urban growth boundary is larger than the city of Clarksville's, which has over 100,000 people. White House, we don't really know if it has zoning authority or not. The changes would fix that, but it's kind of, it's a no man's land right now and we don't know what to do there at all. County overall, you can see the planning regions depicted there. So what's everybody's responsibility in the planning regions? The cities, basically they treat them just like they're in the city. You're in the city effectively for all regulatory purposes. You just don't pay city property taxes. In the county, what do we have to do in the planning regions? We have to enforce the stormwater regulations. We have to review their plans. We have to get the complaints. We have to go and do inspections and all that stuff. Even though the cities have zoning authority there, we have to do this. The cities are not allowed to do it. TDEC won't let them. And of course, we maintain the roads in the planning region as well. The county road superintendent has to do that. So extraterritorial zoning, zoning in the planning regions, how common is that? There's 356 incorporated cities in the state. There's 16 cities in the whole state that do it. Three of them are in Sunder County. The rest are in West Tennessee. There are towns like Atoka, which has about 2,000 or 3,000 people. I don't know how big it is. Brighton, which is about 1,000. Brownsville, which is a few thousand people. They're not big cities except for Memphis and Jackson. Nobody else in Middle Tennessee does this the way that we do here in Sunder County. Perennial questions as far as the planning regions, it's hard to enforce it for the cities, so a lot of folks tend to feel like problems just kind of get left behind. They're not, you know, they're not actually addressing these junk car complaints and the other kinds of code type issues that the county would respond to. Fairness is a common complaint that we hear a lot about. You know, the cities and the residents in the planning regions don't get a vote. So they don't get any say in what the zoning regulations say, but they have to live by them. And the cities collect the revenue for development in the planning regions, building permits and that kind of thing. And when there's problems, they get directed to the county, especially for drainage. And so those are ours to solve. And so that's kind of a joke around the staff is that they get the money and we get the problems. County authority to implement zoning. So the question is, can the county take back the planning regions? Can we apply our zoning there? Yes. State law says that whenever the county legislative body adopts zoning to cover the regional area there, it's automatically superseded and repealed. So if this was approved, city zoning authority would disappear and it would be replaced by county zoning, which will be the rural residential district that we're proposing. And I'll show you that in a minute. So have we gotten here? And I talked about this before we started earlier on in the meeting. We began work back in December 2018 on these amendments. Staff did internally. We started doing public work sessions every month, starting in July of 2019. Did six of them with the planning commission. Did a couple as well with the Board of Zoning Appeals in the fall of 2019. And January 28, 2020, the Sunder County Regional Planning Commission, in accordance with state law, held a public hearing and they voted unanimously to follow, to forward a positive recommendation onto the county commission per Title 13, Chapter 7 of state law. We posted the draft of the resolution and the maps online on the county's website, starting in January of 2020. So they've been up there about six months now. And as I said, we've noticed this meeting in accordance with state law. So we reviewed peer jurisdictions, adapted best practices. Some folks will make fun of government that does that kind of thing and, you know, we tend to borrow from each other because if somebody else has something in their code that stood a legal test, you can probably borrow it. It'll probably stand up. So it's good to do that as opposed to writing things from scratch that's never been tested before. The proposed document is, technology wise, is a searchable PDF. You can go to the table of contents and click on it and it'll take you to wherever you want to go within the document. Within the zoning map, we've consolidated multiple zoning districts. There'll be fewer zoning districts than we have currently. And as I said, the zoning for the planning regions has been replaced with county zoning, a rural residential district. Since the January 28, 2020 hearing, we're not allowed to make large scale changes to the document without going back to the planning commission. And we haven't done that. We're allowed to make small tweaks that wouldn't, you know, cause controversy at the planning commission is what state law says. And there were two that were made. We had a citizen request to have GNRC, who helped us with the map, revise the zoning map to better accentuate the road network. And Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield approached me and then approached Superintendent Phillips related to the zoning for the Liberty Creek School Campus. And it was, it's zone plan unit development. Right now residential plan unit development, which is redundant zoning that needed to be done away with anyway. And so we changed that on the map to institutional. That was a good idea, so we did that. Those changes are deemed minor in nature and they're allowable under state law. Current zoning map, you can see a lot of colors there. The proposed zoning map will simplify things a lot. A lot of the county would just become a rural residential district with a 40,000 square foot lot size minimum. Zooming in on the Galatin area, you see the Galatin Plan Region disappears. That's the Liberty Creek campus I was talking about. Hendersonville the same. You see the existing plan unit developments. Everybody keeps their entitlements. We can't take anything away from anybody. Portland planning area, it goes away as well and you'd have the city limits there. Very quickly, I'm going to try to go through the proposed zoning resolution. I'm going to try not to get into the weeds too much and just talk about, here are the things that we're actually proposing with this. And hopefully, what I'm going to hit on more than anything is just, if I'm going to talk about it in general, that means it's missing. It's something that we need in order to be able to function and it's something that this code is going to add. Purpose and applicability, that is what's allowed in state law. Chapter 2 just takes you, it just classifies everything in the county as a group of activities. Chapter 3 establishes the zoning district, consolidating them down from 16 to 13. There's a few new districts, office professional, institutional. We followed something that Williamson County does. They establish, they have a rural district, kind of like what we're proposing, agricultural reserve, which is a 15 acre minimum district. That's a rural preservation initiative that we have in there. And establish a new mobile home district is the other new one, as I said. That would require rezoning by the county commission. We're not actually rezoning anything, mobile home district right now. Sidewalk requirements, this is something that's come up a good bit in the last couple of days. A lot of folks have had some questions about this. There's nothing in the proposed code that's going to change anything from what we're doing right now. The planning commission has implemented in the last couple of years, requirements for sidewalks. It all stems back to the county comprehensive plan that was adopted back in 2010. It requires, the county comprehensive plan requires sidewalks or a payment in lieu of sidewalks within plan unit developments and within suburban land use types surrounding the city. So if you're in the suburban place type is what it's called, you have to do sidewalks or you can make a payment in lieu of. And the county started doing that back in 2003 and collected revenue over the years from developers. And so that boils down to the planning commission's judgment on if sidewalks are a public necessity at that location or if we could take funds instead that we might use there or somewhere else for another priority. Sidewalk requirements are not going to change in any way as a result of the proposed zoning resolution. You see it referenced in there, but what it's referencing is things that are in that comprehensive plan that would have to change in order to get rid of that. And like I said, we're enforcing that and we're going to continue to enforce that at the planning commission level, whether this passes or fails or whatever. We're going to keep doing that. Or at least that'll be staff's recommendation for the county commission. If the commission wants to change any of the sidewalk policies that we have in place right now, you'll have to go back to the comprehensive plan, which we're definitely not outside, or we're definitely not opposed to taking a look at in the next year or so. I think it's time actually for us to have a look at the comprehensive plan. And I hope the county commission would support looking at that at some point in the future. But it will be outside the scope of the zoning resolution rewrite. Like I said, it doesn't have anything to do with what we're proposing here tonight. Sidewalks don't. Residential district regulations, Chapter 4. Like I said, you've got an agricultural reserve district. Most of the county is this, the rural residential, 40,000 square foot lot size minimum, which is what you have now in most of the county. You've got a residential B district now that's being changed to suburban residential. It has 20,000 square foot minimums. No new property is proposed for this, just what's there now. Mobile home community district. And as I said, we're not going to apply that anywhere and duplex and multifamily development would require rezoning. This would be a new thing, office and institutional. We need an office zoning, especially here in the county. Commercial district, this is just a consolidation. We have six commercial districts that are just going to consolidate them into three based on their intensity. It's pretty standard. Industrial, we just have one industrial district right now. I feel like it'd be a good idea, then the planning commission hopefully agreed with me, to break that into light and heavy. Light being things that can be done within a building that you really can't hear or see or smell. Heavy being the other things that we really need to pay close attention to, salvage yards and that kind of stuff. Chapter 8, this is open space and property owners association standards. So this is another rural preservation element for buffering around subdivisions. I mean, it's going to assist the county meeting those federal stormwater mandates, as I was saying. TDEC is really cracking down on cities and counties. Whether we like it or not, there's nothing anybody can do about it. It's in federal law. Nobody's really a fan of individual property owners being responsible for taking care of detention ponds and that kind of thing. That's got to be a big problem. They can't do it, they won't do it. TDEC wants an association or something like that to take care of those whenever possible. That's what this would do. It would basically establish open space and buffering requirements for subdivisions, requiring detention ponds, stream buffers, wetlands, very steep slopes and that kind of thing, being open space maintained by an HOA. Lots over five acres and that kind of thing, your big tracks, rural areas, that kind of thing, large lot development where you're cutting up farms into 10 or 15 acre tracks or whatever, totally exempt. That's not going to apply to them at all. That's just if you're coming in with lots under five acres. And this is just a real rough sketch on kind of what that would actually look like in practice. You've got the road here. You've got a six lot subdivision here that I'm just kind of showing. So six lots on about six acres. That requires you to set aside about six tenths of an acre, so 27,000 square feet to take care of a detention pond. So you have a little access point right here. The pond is there. It's inside common open space, so everybody has to take care of it and it's not just burdening this one property owner. That's a big problem. They can't do it and the ponds will fail and everybody over here suffers because of it. And so that's why we need to require that. Planning and development regulations, the zoning code, we'd keep basically what we have now for PEDs. It'd be pretty close. Low, medium, high density PEDs. Clarifies that any studies the county wants to see, we can require, requires landscaping, buffering, architectural cohesion, that kind of thing. Very much more stringent buffering, tree planting, tree preservation requirements than anything we have on the books now. Very exacting in terms of the number of trees you have to plant, how far apart they have to be. You know, like I said, that's when somebody's coming in with a rezoning to get a lot of density. And those folks can and should offset any impact they're going to have on the community with buffering and that kind of thing. Right now in the low density PED zone, all you have to do is set aside 5% open space. Planning commission didn't feel like that was enough, so we set it at 20% minimum. It has to be set aside, open space in all types, low, medium, high, no matter what it is, minimum is 20%. More can be required if necessary. And it has to be usable open space that people can use. It's not a gully or something like that that nobody can actually access. Step-by-step stuff is laid out, how you do it. And as I said earlier, that neighborhood meeting would become mandatory. Flood hazard districts, which keeps pretty much what we have now. The county engineer that reports to me would become the floodplain administrator instead of the director of building codes. That's going to involve a good deal of responsibility over to my office from building codes. FEMA and TEMA audit those pretty regularly. So there's a lot of administrative work that goes into that. Supplementary district regulations. Your road access requirements would be the same. We'd have some new standards for Highway 109 because TDOT wants us to, special exception stuff. One thing I'm very excited about, mother-in-law suites and that kind of thing. We're going to carve out some ways for people to do that a lot easier. I think the world's changed since 1970, whatever, when the county first adopted those regulations. You just can't do it in the county for the most part without them being nearly dead. And you have to have doctor's notes and all this other stuff. Galatin and Hendersonville and all the counties will allow this. And so we're setting up some real strict criteria to let people do that, make sure their septic system is kind of accommodated and that kind of thing. I think it would help us keep up with the times a little bit. Continuing on with that, traffic impact studies, here's when you need them. Here's how they have to be written and that kind of thing. Detailed parking requirements, we don't have very specific parking requirements for a lot of uses. This would change that and there's diagrams in there to show them how they have to do their parking. Landscaping, screening and buffering. I heard from numerous county commissioners as we were working on this, saying that we wanted to see more detail in this. Landscape plan requirements will be set forth, buffer yard requirements. Tree credits are allowed in those buffer yards, helps to preserve existing trees. That's something we've had two or three county commissioners ask about. And then there's stuff for enforcement and making sure that landscaping is maintained. Sign regulations, as I said, what we have right now is unenforceable. We don't have a permitting process. If you want to put in a sign, I don't have a permit to give you. And that's not a good thing. You have to go to the BZA to get a variance, which is not legal. BZAs grant variances based on topography and those kinds of things. What they're doing is saying they like your sign and that's not grounds for a variance. So you have to actually have a permitting process, an inspection process. This would do that. As far as political signage and that kind of thing, we don't get into that. We just refer to state law, what state law says that can be done for political signage. Non-conforming uses, grandfathered lots are taken care of and that kind of thing. Legal uses may continue. Administration and enforcement, this seems kind of silly. Everybody ought to know what they're doing, but the proposed zoning code would lay out everybody's exact responsibilities. Here's what everybody does. That's a big problem because everybody needs to know what their job is. It needs to be laid out so you can actually establish processes. Commercial and industrial site plans, as I said, we don't have anything for that right now really. And so this would change that. We'd have some details and some information to work with. As I said, specific criteria for a whole lot of different uses, I don't get into all of them, but things like wedding venues and event venues, campgrounds. If you're going to do a kennel or automotive repair, that kind of thing, in more of a residential area, there's certain criteria you have to meet so you don't have a negative impact on your neighbors. Administration enforcement, this is a big one right here. There's a nine-pronged test that's going to be established if this is passed. When somebody wants to rezone their property, they've got to demonstrate compliance with these nine factors that basically show the county that it's a good rezoning and should be done. And then there's everything, you know, submitted requirements, you have to have a complete application. One thing I'm real excited about here, public notice, I know that's important to everybody on the county commission, making sure that people know what's coming. Sign notice has never been required for the BZA when you get a variance. I think Commissioner Nipper actually had asked about this a while back. So we did, we put that in there that now if you want to go to the BZA for a variance or a conditioning use permit, you have to have a sign out front saying that there's a change proposed for the property. City of Galatin does that. I think it's a good idea. And then there's just processes if you want to defer or whatever, have a public hearing. We have a historic overlay for Castanha Springs. We keep that, doesn't change at all. State legislature put that into effect for us. Airport zone, it doesn't change either really. We just, the city of Portland asked that we add the Portland airport to it because some of that's in the planning region, so we did that. Legal status provisions, some clarifications that we don't enforce private restrictions. There's an effective date of July 1, 2020. That's very important. And it clarifies that this repeals and replaces everything that's in the old version and any amendments after that.[1568.16] And there's appendices, I won't get into all those, but those are very important to bureaucrats like me. Takeaways, I want to leave you with three things here before I wrap up. These changes are going to establish, in my opinion, and I hope the planning commission would agree with me, these changes will establish a fair and understandable rulebook that everybody can follow. There's going to be predictability to the process, it's not based on who you know, it's not based on anything other than do you meet the criteria? And so you come to the county, you meet the requirements, you're good. And that's fairness, that's what everybody expects, and that's what we're aiming for anyway. Clear criteria to get your approvals, and it'll make doing business in Sunder County similar to doing business with other jurisdictions. Everybody's a little different, but we'll be on the same page with everybody else. Second thing I want you to take away, no zoning code's perfect, it's not possible to have a perfect zoning code. Just by its nature, it's a regulatory document. You're telling people what they can and can't do in certain instances. I will say, we don't tell anybody what to do in general unless they are trying to change the use of the property, though. What the zoning code is for, it tells you what to do if you're trying to subdivide your farm, if you're trying to take your farm and make it into a commercial use and something that's going to disturb your neighbors. That's when we get involved. But by and large, our goal is not to mess with anybody at all. So what we'd request of the county commission, you know, if you see things you don't like, you know, I understand that, but we'd ask that you not make the perfect be the enemy of the good here. This overall, I think it would be a positive thing for the county. It'll make it definitely easier for me and my staff, the building codes office, to do their jobs. It's going to protect the county from what we really think is a lot of inappropriate development that doesn't need to happen in a lot of instances. It's going to bring Sunder County's land use practices into the 21st century, which is something that we really want to do. And the last thing I'll leave you with, and you all know this, Sunder County's growing. Right now, there's a lot of people that want to live here. And when I came to work for the county two-plus years ago, residential building a lot of an acre was selling for about $20,000, $30,000, depending on where it was, in a lot of the unincorporated area. They're selling for $50,000 to $100,000 right now. And when your property values start to get to the level that they're getting to here in Sunder County, you need to take action to protect it, or it's going to be gone. It's going to be gone, and it's going to be done in ways that you probably didn't want it to be done. And so a growing county is a good problem to have, it's a lot worse than having a declining county. And, you know, I think right now, we're standing at an inflection point where we can either take steps to get our arms around this reality, that this is a growing county, or we can deal with the consequences if we don't want to do that. If we don't want to take care of that, that's, not planning is also planning. It's a choice. And so I think right now, we're standing at a crossroads to determine whether we want to do something about it or complain in 10 years. And I hope that, I hope the county commission will consider what's proposed here tonight. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Does anyone have a specific question for Josh? Mr. Goode, and then Mr., not going to Mr. Becker.
I have a question, I want to make a motion when passed 2006-10, as presented.
Okay, motion made by, oh, hang on, we can't do that motion yet because we still have to do public comments. So hang tight on the motion. Right now, what I'm looking for is if you have any specific questions for Josh. So I'm going to hold on to that, Mr. Goode, we'll come back in a little bit. Mr. Becker.
Couple of questions I had, definitely appreciate it, it was really good presentation, very informative. Some of this, well, a couple of these things is just to help educate myself. So HOA, when you say HOA out in the county, is that what, like, I understand HOA in like a planned little neighborhood, is that, would this HOA in one of your slides, would it be in existing neighborhoods that are already in the county, or would it, would people all of a sudden become an HOA or something, what would happen then?
So it's kind of what I was saying a little while ago, if you're living in the county right now, you've got a lot you're living on, you're not changing anything, nothing changes, right? But if you've got a piece of property and you're wanting to subdivide it, you're wanting to develop that piece of property, it's going to apply to you then. And so really, like I said, what the point of the HOA, the point of setting aside open space and things like this would require, is to make sure that the infrastructure and the floodable areas and those kinds of things is being taken care of. The planning commission has actually been requiring this a good bit here lately. They just don't feel right about burdening an individual property owner with $150,000 detention bond, feel like it needs to be an HOA responsibility. This would codify this in the zoning code. Really what I look for in the HOA documents when they turn them in for review, I'm not looking, we don't do architectural standards, we don't, I don't care how long your garage door stays open, or your, you know, how long your trash can stays out on the road. The only thing I look for that I really care about in those documents is how you're taking care of the stormwater stuff. As long as they're taking care of the stormwater stuff, that satisfies me. As to form, I'm good. They can record the HOA documents and move on. But we do really have to find ways to make sure that the stormwater infrastructure is being taken care of.
Okay, so if there's a property that's being, that will end up in the future being developed into however many lots, then that will require an HOA be developed for that development?
In most instances, it would. And so the county is really starting to get away, and the planning commission, I think, would agree with me, we're trying to get away from cutting up the county two and three lots at a time. And that's something that we see a whole lot, where you have a whole big, long length of road frontage, and you do it two lots, and then a little while later, three lots, and a little while later, three lots, and it just kind of goes like that. We're trying to really get the property owners to come to us with an actual plan. I tell people, my department's job is not really to do great, big, grandiose plans for the county, it's to make everybody else plan. And so we try to get the developer and his representatives to come to us with a plan for the whole property. Let's go ahead and get a plat in place for the whole property, show where all your detention and all the stuff you're going to need in there is going to be, and then you've got to set up an entity to take care of that, and that's really what that revolves around.
What would prohibit or incentivize people to not continue the two lots at a time? Is it, if it's more than one lot is HOA, or?
Well, if it's three lots or more, is the way that we would typically look at it. But, I mean, we're really, really, not every three-lot subdivision needs to have a detention pond and that kind of thing, some do. It just depends on, their engineer has to look at it, you have to hire an engineer to look at a subdivision when it comes to the planning commission. And like I said, we're getting away from the two and three-lot stuff a little bit more. When you start looking at five lots and more, you're going to have to do detention, you're going to have to put in a pond. It's, the stormwater resolution requires it, TDEC requires it. And so when they do that, that's in general when you're going to have to start thinking about an HOA and that kind of thing, to take care of that.
Okay, and then another question I have is about the, I guess it's the industrial zones, I believe. I think there's, I think you said there's one zoning right now, but then there's going to be a light, I forget what, I didn't write it down, a light and heavy maybe?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Can you go into that a little bit more detail, about the difference in those two?
I can. So like I was saying, and of course, this is new, I haven't implemented it yet, lived with it day-to-day as far as the practicalities of it, but just in general, your light industrial is going to be indoor manufacturing uses, any kind of manufacturing, basically, that occurs inside of a building. Like I said, that doesn't, I think I said it during the presentation, that doesn't generate a lot of noise, doesn't generate a lot of smoke, doesn't smell really bad, you know, doesn't have a lot of offensive characteristics, that's your light industrial. And that can go, you know, that can go on a smaller lot, as a parking lot for the employees to park at, it's just a self-contained building. Your heavy industrial stuff, like I think I said, it's more, if you're going to do like a recycling transfer station, we actually have one of those in the county, some kind of a little transfer station, that's the only heavy industrial property that I have zoned on the zoning map right now, is heavy industrial. But that's a use that needs to be well separated from other uses, you don't want a lot of residential next to it, you don't want it, you don't want it next to schools or anything like that. And the heavy industrial zone as well, you know, objectionable uses, there's a lot of those, adult uses are actually one of those as well. Adult uses would be another one, that would only be allowed to go in that heavy industrial zone.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. We have several other people in the queue, I just want to remind everybody that all we're doing at this point is asking specific questions about the presentation. So I'm going to be, you know, it's 10:25, I want to keep the debate moving along, we still have public comments, so I'm going to ask just for questions. If you have comments, I ask you to save that for when we debate the, when we debate the motion here in a little bit. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yeah, the document, it didn't dig into a lot of the details. It's, you've got a whole section over like signs and stuff like that, existing stuff. So basically, if I have a sign out there, and it's 20 square feet existing, it can never be any bigger.
Well, it would depend. If it was a legally permitted use, it could, it could get bigger. But it depends, I'd have to look at the specific zoning and the specific area that it's in, and the use, and that kind of thing, to figure out the specifics on that specific zone. But non-conforming signs are treated a little different under state law than almost anything else, because they're a speech item, and so they're regulated by the First Amendment. And so there are instances where you can expand an existing sign that's been permitted. Now, if you have an illegal sign, if there's a sign that's out there that isn't connected to a development or anything like that, we'd have to look at it and try to research if the county at some point gave some kind of approval for it.
It's also in this document where you, stuff that's grandfathered in right now, you know, can never really be changed, made any bigger.
Right.
If I got a barn or a building out there on my lot, I can't make it any bigger.
Uh, no, not if it's-
That's what this says.
No, sir, I don't think it does.
Well, maybe it's comprehension.
Now, if it's an illegal barn, you know, if it's an illegal barn or something that was, that's in a setback, or that encroaches on a property line or something like that, that makes it illegal, that's, you're correct. But if you have a legally permitted barn, you know, just come get another permit, and we'll let you expand it anytime you want to.
Well, there's illegal stuff that's out there that's illegal now, that wasn't illegal in the 80s. So it's either grandfathered in or it's not grandfathered in.
Right, right. And anything that's grandfathered in under the existing code that we have in place now and have had in place, you know, we're going to look into it, we're going to honor it. I mean, we're not looking to take anything away from anybody. So I think our mode of operation is going to be, you know, we're looking at anything to determine if it's conforming, or is an illegal use, you know, or is grandfathered or whatever, we're going to try to err on the side of figuring that it probably is grandfathered unless we can prove that it's not, unless it poses a public safety issue or something like that.
Well, it says in this document too, that all burden of proof lies within the property owner.
Yeah, and that's in state law, that's in state law. So there's a lot of stuff in there that is taken directly out of state statute. And state statute's pretty rigorous when it comes to non-conforming uses, and so...
So another question. So to meet my burden of proof, if we pass this document tonight, every property owner in Sunder County that may have one of these situations, better go out tomorrow, start taking pictures of their property, on how it's set the day after this was passed.
I think it's also important to remember that I'm the only planning staff member in Sunder County, so I don't, I don't go around the county necessarily looking to try to find that somebody's doing something wrong. If somebody calls something in, you know, if somebody calls something in that says that their neighbor has an illegal structure or something like that, we would investigate it to make a determination on whether it is grandfathered or isn't grandfathered. We just need the specifics on that particular building to make a determination.
Well, I understand you don't drive around, but we have a codes department that does, and they now have an employee that that's what he does, is drives around and looks for that stuff.
Well, not that exactly. I mean, what he looks for is things like junk cars and tall grass and that kind of thing, and unmaintained property. He's not really looking for illegal structures necessarily.
Well, he, I can vouch for difference, because I had a relative that had a building that'd been in place since 1984, and they got a letter. Nobody complained, but they got a letter. So non-conforming things, you know, I'm not knocking your work, but I wish we'll make sure our citizens are protected going forward, that stuff that they've been had on their property since the 80s, the 70s, the 50s, even the, you know, maybe the 90s. So this document addresses that, and it's up to them to, you know, meet the burden of proof.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Hinton?
Yes, sir, thank you. Two or three things. You spoke about a sign for rezoning. If there's an area being considered for rezoning, you're going to put signage up where the community will see that signage and know that there's going to be a...
Yes, sir, and we do that now for rezonings. What I was talking about was for the board of zoning appeals. If you're going to go to the board of zoning appeals for a variance or something like that, we don't require a sign now, but we will. That's an additional signage that we require.
Okay. Under the current regulation, somebody has 10 acres, what's the probability that he can get 10 lots on those 10 acres today?
Uh, well, not good, not good. It's, and that's because it may not perk. It's, everything boils down to your septic soils, there's 10-acre lots in the county that you can't get two lots out of, because they're marshland or something like that that won't perk. So it boils down to perkability of the lots. I assume what you're referring to is the common open space and having to set aside some space. There may be times where that might cost a developer a lot, it might, because that lot shouldn't be a building lot, it shouldn't have somebody, it shouldn't be one where you have an acre, three-quarters of it is a detention pond, a quarter of it is where the person lives. And we've had those in the past here in Sunder County. And so that would probably be lost as a building lot, because it's not a viable lot.
Do you think the change in these regulations, if you had 10 acres, and you were lucky enough to be able to get 10 lots on those 10 acres, what's the probability that installing this code will reduce that 10 lots down to none?
Um, you know, it's just one of those things, it is possible, I'm definitely not saying it's not possible, but it's totally up to the engineers. The engineers have to run drainage calculations, and they have to figure out how it drains, and whether a pond is necessary, and that kind of thing.
So you're saying that what we're under today is as stringent as what we're going to be under when we pass it?
Well, the federal mandates that we operate under are not changing at all, and so the stormwater has to be taken care of, there's nowhere around that.
As far as the water, right.
Yeah, that's right. And so it's got to be, quantity and quality have to be taken care of here in Sunder County, and so what a quantity is what comes off property, and quality is how clean it is. And so those have to be taken care of, no matter what. Now, what we'd be imposing here would be a little different. My assertion would be, it might serve to the detriment of the developer, but it's going to serve to the benefit of the property owners. And so I think the property owners will be better served by this. Yes, the developer may lose a lot every once in a while.
And of course, sometimes the developer is the owner, I mean...
He won't be though, not when he sells the lots and builds homes on them, then you're going to have 10 new residents to deal with that may have issues with drainage and that kind of thing.
I'm talking about like a developer goes out here and buys 10 acres from somebody with expectation of putting 10 lots on it, and he may very well not be able to do that.
Right, he may be able to...
If the owner, current owner decides that he'll cut it up and just sell it as 10 lots, he may not get 10, he may only get nine.
That's right, he may get nine, that's right.
So there is a possibility, there is some possibility, 20%, 25%, 30%, what old and new that you might run into this loss of...
I'd say that's a reasonable assertion. It's impossible to say until I look at the specifics on the lot, though.
On sidewalks, you, if you've got three lots, you've got to have sidewalk, is that what I...
No, sir. So as I said, nothing in this affects sidewalks in any new way. It references back to the comprehensive plan. And so what the comprehensive plan requires is if you're in a planning unit development, if you're going to rezone a piece of property for planning and development, you're going to put sidewalks in on both sides of the street.
Okay.
If you're coming in in the area surrounding any of the cities, that's called the urban growth boundary, so back in 2010, they said you're going to have to put sidewalks in there, too.
Okay.
But if you're coming in anywhere in that middle area, which is about 60% of the county, especially the unincorporated area, at least 60%, you're probably not going to have to put sidewalks in. It's not something that's going to be required, it's just required in certain parts of the county. And we look at those when we get applications in to see if it's going to be required.
Now, if we get into a situation where the sidewalks are required, the contractor can pay money in lieu of building the sidewalk?
Yes, that's something the county commission started allowing people to do back in 2003.
That's the dumbest thing I ever heard.
And so, but the intent of it, I think, is good. I mean, I'll defend the 2003 county commission, but I mean, the intent there was to, you know, there might be instances where the county just doesn't want sidewalks there. And so now, the planning commission will require sidewalks if it makes sense to put sidewalks in, I've seen them do it. But if they feel like it's not a, it doesn't make sense, the comprehensive plan still says it's required, they can't overrule the comprehensive plan, so that's another option.
If, I hope nobody does, because what's going to happen, and I'm making a commentary, I apologize for that, somewhere down the road, they're going to vacate these sidewalks, and the road department's going to be out working on sidewalks, because ADA's going to fine us if they start falling apart and nobody fixes it.
I think that's, that is a valid point.
You're talking about specs on signs, you're talking about permanent signs?
Yes, sir. What I'm talking about signage, what I'm talking about is when a business is coming into Sunder County, and they want to put a sign out in front of it to advertise it, those are the signs that I'm talking about. Or, you know, trying to think of any other examples, well, another thing that's regulated by the zoning code is, the planners call it off-site signage, and so that's like billboards. In general, the planning commission doesn't want a proliferation of billboards, we don't have anything to regulate that right now, but the proposed zoning code would prohibit off-site signage. That means you can't advertise on Highway 109 with a 100-foot-tall billboard if your business isn't located there.
But you're not talking about any for-sale signs, auction signs, those kind of things?
No, no, temporary signage is treated differently, and it's generally allowed.
Okay.
You just can't put it in the right of way.
You mentioned something about trash containers. I was told that somewhere in these rigs, it says that you got to have your trash can behind the house and in the building, is that in there?
No, I don't think so. If it's in there, well, I may need to come back to the planning commission and get that taken out at some point.
Okay.
There might be something in there for the commercial folks, though, there might be something in there, but...
But not residential.
There's not, not anything that I recall in there for residential.
The law director just clarified that that was a proposal before Hendersonville, not us. And it failed in Hendersonville.
I'm sure I got something else here, but if you'll allow me to come back, if I look pitiful, I'll stop for now. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Sullivan?
Just one question, Josh, if we pass this tonight, this would go into effect July 1 of 2020, did I see that?
Yes, sir, that's right. And so that's left over, of course, this was originally proposed to go to the county commission back in March.
So everything moving forward from that point, new fiscal year, has to meet the guidelines that we passed tonight?
That's right, that's right. We get new applications in for commercial site plans, or rezonings, or new subdivision plots, or whatever they might be. As these standards apply to them, they'd have to meet those new requirements, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Michelle?
Thank you. Hey, Josh. Appreciate your work on this. I've got a couple of questions. If you turn to page 26 in this packet right here.
Okay.
Do you have a packet? You may know it. Sorry.
It's a lot to memorize.
Yeah. Page 26. There's a table in there. And you referenced it a little bit, and we can't see the map in the back, obviously, because it's black and white and you can't see the colors. Can you tell me, so these are the residential districts, AR, RR, SR, and then the mobile home community. Did you say in your presentation that most of the county will lie under the RR? Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Rural residential.
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but if most of our county is under this RR and the minimum square lot is forty thousand square feet, then that's a little bit under an acre, point nine of an acre.
It's about point nine two. Yes, ma'am.
So, if Bob has a farm, that's a hundred-acre farm right now, and it's zoned under our current regulations, he can choose to do five-acre lots?
Right.
Or bring it back as a PUD and possibly do point-nine acre lots?
Well, if he's got a, let's say Bob has a hundred-acre farm and it's got road frontage and everything, it's a good piece of property. Now, he could rezone it and get more density, right? So, he could do, you know...
Right. But under the current zoning, all he can do is...
That's right. He could do forty thousand square foot lots. So, point nine-two acre lots under the existing zoning. So, Bob is zoned rural residential, which has a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet.
That's what it is currently?
That's what it is currently, and that's what it would remain. We wouldn't be taking anything away from him.
Okay. Okay. I'll just pause for a minute and look at some...
But I think maybe what you were talking about was the five-acre lots and that kind of stuff. So, the difference, when you start talking about five-acre tracks, and I'm gonna try not to get off in the weeds here, but state law says that you can cut up any piece of property into five-acre lots with no planning commission approval. You can just go do it. As long as you've got your access, you can get a building permit on it. But if you wanna get more density than that, you have to turn in a subdivision plat to the planning commission. And if you do that, then you can do, you can take that hundred-acre farm down to acre lots.
Right. So, my question in clarification is that, okay, Bob has a hundred-acre farm. If he wants to divide it into five-acre lots, he can do that.
He just files a deed with the register of deeds and that's it.
There's really no coming before us and doing anything. He can do five-acre lots.
They do that by state law.
So, if we change this zoning to what you said most of the county would be under this RR, can Bob now do one-acre lots as long as it meets? Because what you, if I understand you correctly, you said it will be based on strictly if it meets criteria.
Right.
So, now, he can come before the body and ask that he wants to put one hundred? I mean, obviously, we know he's not actually gonna get a hundred lots on his hundred-acre farm, but maybe he's gonna get eighty lots on his hundred-acre farm. Then it is strictly going to be, does he meet the criteria to get that?
And he'll have to go to the planning commission and file a subdivision plat, yep. Which is exactly what he'd be able to do now. Nothing changes. Nothing changes there. There's no changes. I know that gets a little bit confusing, the five-acre lot thing and all that stuff. But that's, the important thing to remember is what's your minimum lot size. Minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet on his hundred-acre farm. And so, he could cut off, if he wants to just cut off a meter on the road, he just cuts off forty thousand square feet and that's it.
I may ask a couple of more questions in a few minutes.
Thank you, Michelle. Ms. Kruger?
Oh.
Hang on. Hit it again, Ms. Kruger.
She covered it. I forgot it was in there.
Okay. Oh. Okay. There you go.
She covered what I was gonna say.
You ready? No, no, it was on. All right, hang on. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Kruger. I apologize. I'm sorry. My bad. Okay. Does anyone else have a question? All right, at this time, thank you. Thank you, Josh. I really appreciate your presentation and the work that you and your team has done. It's fantastic work, so thank you. All right, public comments. Ruth, you've been waiting a long time.
Well, you guys have been waiting on that too.
Let me read the notice. Let me read my notice, Mr. Hinton.
Okay. Let me, you can just come up and state your, we'll get you to sign. Okay, hang on one second, Ms. Fennel. You can go ahead and come on up. Mr. Kemp's gotta read the information.
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on June 29, 2020 at 7:00 PM, thereabout, in the Bethel Brown Commission chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building, 355 North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin. The subject of the public hearing will be for the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners to consider and possibly vote on a set of comprehensive amendments to the zoning resolution and official zoning map of Sumner County, Tennessee. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation related to this item to the Board of County Commissioners on January 28, 2020. A copy of the proposed changes of the zoning resolution and official zoning map is located on the county's website. A paper copy is available for review during the regular business hours of the Office of the Sumner County Planning and Stormwater Department, located at North Belvedere Drive. A copy of this notice is on file. The Sumner County Planning and Stormwater Department of the Sumner County Administration Building at North Belvedere Drive. Anyone having any interest or desiring to ask questions concerning this request is invited to attend the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. We'll open our public hearing. Ms. Fennel? Ms. Fennel? Sure.
I know everybody's had a long day already, including myself, so we'll try to keep it to the point. Most of you know I've been following the commission for multiple years. Been kind of a blessing and a curse for all of us, I think, at times. But I do appreciate your service and I appreciate what you do. So, I know that this particular issue has been going on for a while, but it kind of strikes me as funny that I follow this commission. I follow the things that you guys do. And this caught me totally off guard. I was not contacted by anybody, did not see anything in the papers. But I also have a two-hour commute to Bowling Green and ten-hour days, and I don't have a lot of time to necessarily be checking websites and just to kind of see what little nuggets are there. So, I'm gonna do a respectful request that if there are any items going forward, any of you are welcome to contact me at any time. I will give you my phone number. I'll even put it in the record, 615-975-7884. I don't care. So, I know that there are things that need to be reviewed concerning this process, and I understand and respect that. But if I understood his presentation correctly, it's doing away with the Gallatin and the Hendersonville and the White House and the Portland Planning Commissions? No? Okay. Then that's why it's important for citizens to have the chance to ask questions and to get clarification on that. Because that was confusing to me, just seeing this kind of for the first time. I understand that there's been an arbitrary deadline of July 1 put on this, that it was kind of wrapped up in January. But it's one of those things that nobody anticipates a pandemic. Nobody anticipates businesses shutting down and kind of the economy going to heck in a handbasket. So, the time between when this was approved and available for public review, things have happened in between that kind of logjammed that process. So, I appreciate Commissioner Hyde making that request, and I would ask you to seriously consider having some kind of opportunity for citizens who are going to be directly affected by this to ask questions, to get clarification. What does it mean to me directly? A lot of times, the commission will make decisions that they talk to other legislative, you know, elected officials about, whether it's mayors or other planning officials and that type of thing. But where we tend to fall short is citizen input, the people who are directly affected. And it comes across as, not intentionally, but it comes across as, well, we know better. We're the experts. But where we fail on that is to take into account the end consequences and the end repercussions and the end effect and impact of a lot of the decisions that we make. So, I'm here to kind of, again, respectfully ask you to consider a way to allow this information to specifically be brought to the table. Now, it's frequently said that it was advertised according to state law. Well, first of all, the state law, in my opinion, needs to be amended, okay? Putting it in a newspaper in the days of social media and email and all of those kinds of things is no longer appropriate or no longer sufficient. And I think it's used to hide behind that. We've done it that way from tax increases to other important topics. People are willing and interested and want to know and want to learn. Let's help them do that. So, I understand the time constraints that have been put into this and the time constraints that you're under now. But again, you know, just keep in mind, our founders always preferred that the decision-making be closest to the people. And in order to do that, the people have to be educated. That's why we had town halls. That's why we had public forums. We have not had truly public forums with the people who are going to be impacted on this in this circumstance. And this is fifty years in the making. So, can we take another couple of months to make sure that we're doing it right and doing it in a positive manner as opposed to, well, we've decided and that's what it is? And again, I'm not deferring, I'm not discounting the expertise that has gone into this. I'm just saying, give the public a chance to be educated and learn about this. Again, just thank you for everyone who's put effort into this, but please consider ways to educate the public before the final decision is made. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Juvontz? Ms. Juvontz, if you would state your name and address for the minutes, and then you'll have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Michelle Juvontz, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Thank you for letting me add my name. And I wasn't planning on talking tonight because I didn't really have time to read the three-hundred-page document. But I wanted to find out about it, so I came tonight. And thank you to Commissioner Mansfield because I found out about the document because he put it on Facebook last week. And that's, I like to read everything. I read a lot of stuff, and I would have read this if I had had time. And I didn't because I just saw it last week for the first time. And I will read it if I had time. So, I'm hoping that you'll put off passing it tonight. I agree with what Ruth just said. I think that people can easily find out about stuff that they wanna know about. And it is social media. Right now, that's how people find their, get their news. Just listening to the presentation this evening, there were a couple of things that I was concerned about, and I wanna know more about it, and I wanna read about it. And I'll get to it when I have time. But just one week isn't enough time to read a three-hundred-page document when you have other things to do. So, a couple of things that stuck out to me were establishing the industrial districts. That's something that I have recently been paying attention to with the city of Gallatin. I live in Gallatin. And following the whole Woolhawk Data Center, which you all know as, came in front of you as Skillet a couple of years ago. But that was, would be something that would be like a light industrial district, which it sounds like is being established here. And I'm really concerned about that, what's happening with that because of, there's just a lot of questions. And it's taking up eight hundred acres of land, and it's gonna be using at maximum drawdown after the third year of it being built, just over two million gallons a day. And our capacity is sixteen million gallons. And so, that's a really big amount of our water capacity that it's using. So, if that's something that the county's also gonna be thinking about putting in to our zoning, that we can also allow this kind of a development to happen in the county, not just in the city, things like our water and our electricity, those are limited resources that we need to be very careful about. The other thing that stood out to me in the presentation tonight was the open space that was talked about when there's a development, that there would be increased open space that would be required. And that's something I'm paying attention to a lot the last several years because I've been affected personally by that. And the other thing, I think, that is coming in front of you soon is something called the Meadows. And that's something that I've been following really closely with the city. And that's something that, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense when you have something like the Meadows, which is a high-density development in a non-contiguous annexation, like jumping across several acres out into the county when there's people completely surrounding that. So, how does that work with, it's kind of a disconnect. Like, how does that work with the, when you have like a buffer zone, but they don't have a buffer zone from this Meadows development? But then the county's now gonna be saying that you're gonna require a buffer zone for developments? And so, it's like some sort of a conflict that's not really, there's a disconnect there. And I'm opposed to the Meadows, just to let you all know. I'll probably be back when you all have that in front of you, whenever that is, next month or so, because it doesn't make sense for that area. And I think that the city of Gallatin cannot afford it at this time. And I think it's a terrible thing for the people who live next to it, who chose to live in the county to be stuck right into, like, having a city right in the middle of them. So, but, so the buffer zone thing is a big deal too. And there's a lot of things I'd like to read in this document, but I haven't had time yet. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Eric Johnson? Mr. Johnson, if you'd state your name and address for the minutes, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Eric Johnson, and I live at 1101 North Corinth Road, Portland, Tennessee. I'm currently building a new home at 176 Keene Road. That's in Portland as well. I'm a local general contractor. I build houses here in Sumner County. I built multiple in the city limits of Portland and in the county last year, doing the same this year. I got multiple builds going in both the city and the county. This planning region passing actually is gonna be pretty beneficial for builders and developers. It's something I was pretty excited about. I didn't really read, I guess it's kind of my fault. I didn't really read some of the regulations coming forward. And I think it brought some of the same questions that I've heard expressed today in the room. But, Josh, excellent presentation. I appreciate it. That kind of clarified some of the things, some of the questions that I had going forth with, you know, new construction, new developments, and how you break up tracks. I personally like the UPT regulations. It keeps your fly-by-night developers and your fly-by-night builders out of the county. It makes for a better product. So, that being said, TDEC is, you know, down our throats as far as septic and stormwater and so on and so forth. That being said, it, you know, when I heard HOA in the county, seventy-five percent of my clientele, first thing they ask, is this in the county or city? Is there HOA? Well, that being said, me personally, as a resident, I live in the county. I don't wanna deal with HOA. If I wanted HOA, I'd move into the city limits. Same with the sidewalk. I heard something about a sidewalk and was like, a sidewalk now in the county? We're in the county. Come on. Well, now, it's kind of clarified. I get it that nothing's changing. It's pretty much maintaining the same thing. I don't think personally there should be lots less than one acre. You gotta have about a one-acre minimum, forty thousand square feet, I believe, for septic, a soil area for a septic system for your home. So, therefore, those regulations, as far as I know, they've all been into place. Now, there is a document that was one hundred ninety-four pages, what was posted online to three hundred and some now. I haven't got to look through them directly, and I'm sure there's gonna be some changes, but I don't think it's gonna be anything out of the ordinary that's not going to better future developments for, you know, both residential, commercial, and industrial. So, me as a, you know, future developer and, you know, general contractor building here, I think it's going to be a huge benefit for that, from that aspect, for us to separate city and county. So, that's all I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate it. At this time, we'll call our public meeting, we'll adjourn our public meeting, and we'll move back to our agenda. Mr. Goode, you had a motion earlier.
Yes, I read my motion in the past 2006, yeah, ten, actually.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Rhodes. Mr. Mansfield, you're up in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Again, I wanna thank Josh for, he and I met about a year and a half ago, and he showed me some things in the current document that we agreed was pretty wacky. So, I have no problems with updating and changing this document. And I appreciated seeing a lot of what Mr. Sudditt showed in the presentation because it showed a lot of the good. The questions and things that have been presented to me by citizens and, you know, and asked of several of us is, there is still bad in this, and I understand, I appreciate you don't wanna let perfect get in the way of good. But, you know, I'm just of, I would love to have an opportunity for citizens to really have that kind of feedback and opportunity to read and have town halls on this. And my position hadn't changed from that, from the senior commissioner from the eighth district. that, from the senior commissioner from the 8th District defer earlier. You know, and the, the main thing it comes down to is, you know, I think citizens look at this document, and they think, you know, wanting government to serve them, or serve the people by providing services or infrastructure or protection, is not contradictory to objecting to imposition of restrictions that might break their hearts, and some of these people that I've heard stories from, due to undue burdens, they feel, or even their wallets on some things. And so, there are concerns that a lot of citizens have, and, you know, with all due respect, I, I've, I've read this 305-page document. I requested this from Josh back in March, and he mailed it to me before our, we were supposed to have this hearing before COVID hit. And it, you know, my interpretation is a little bit different than what was presented, because I see a lot of terminology in here talking about being incompatible with character of development, or elimination of uses of land which might, or buildings and structures which don't conform to these new standards. And, you know, that's subjective. Honestly, if anything, this document, to me, seems to discourage, as a whole, rural life, and encourages high-density, more rules-focused, permit-based urban life in the county. And after reading this document, the first thing that came to mind, and, and I had citizens say the same thing to me, is the goal should not be to turn Sumner County into one big HOA, or another city. If I want to live in a city, I'll go live in a city. If I want to live in a county, I live in the county because of more loose restrictions. And, you know, and then we've had a lot of groups pop up on Facebook and on social media, like Protect the Shore, Shackle Island, or Preserve Sumner County, Preserve Rural Sumner County, and the question that's been posed to me, are we listening to things? And so, I do appreciate some of the things that do, do address agricultural districts and protecting and preserving things, but I've had constituents of mine ask me, what protections are in this against overdevelopment? And this document definitely seems to be more developer-centric and not individual citizen-centric in a lot of ways, to me. You know, it, it places a lot of emphasis on, you know, community rights or versus individual rights, and I had one citizen, you know, make a comment to me, as a constituent of mine of Long Hollow, that, you know, reading through this, and it's kind of a lot of ands and buts and what-ifs, generally speaking, you know, really, there's nothing that stops us from changing the, any zoning in this at any time. It really, basically by sheer political will and a majority vote of this commission, you can still change anything and do what we want to. And so I don't, I don't see protections for a lot of things, and, and that's what citizens are telling me, and they have concerns, and with, with a lot of the nitpicky details they get, and it's a lot of document, I've got highlights on almost every page. You know, we hear a lot of, and I appreciate it, but a lot of buzzwords around things like community. There's a word I've learned called communitarianism, but, you know, hear things like preserving green space, or protect our children, and it's for everyone's security, or protect the rights of those in the future. And these types of discussions at a 30,000-foot view, you know, are the noblest discussions. But what happens historically is, is they become more restrictive on individual rights. You know, there's a whole section back in here, in the, in the back, about criminal, criminalization, and I don't, I'm not, I can't remember if the, I assume maybe the current document has that, I don't know about the criminalization. So, again, this is not necessarily what's wrong with this, but it just, I kind of what's wrong in general, in my opinion, looking at both documents together. And so when, when you criminalize these things, you know, you're saying these, these are violations, it's a misdemeanor and a fine. I mean, that's what criminalization is, and that's what it talks about. And so, a lot of these things that make the criminalization is, and there's a lot of words of talking about community, and where an individual and their property might not be deemed compatible, or you're deemed incompatible with the plan. I actually had this happen to a constituent of mine, he called me to complain about the now-defunct Long Hollow Court of Plan, or I'll say the ignored or forgotten at this point. And what he relayed to me was, he has a horse farm, he has acreage, and there was the planner at that time, or the person, the consultant in charge, he asked him, it's like, how is the, how is my farm compatible with like this transit village you want to put next to me in this proposed plan? And the consultant looked at him and said, you're not compatible. And so, the concern is that there are a lot of things in this that make people not compatible, you know, and that's a problem that we should have, you know, as far as the, the rights of the individual is one thing, and I just want to make sure that it doesn't get trampled in this document, you know, and a lot of things with that. So, a lot of questions I had, kind of got answered some of them, but, you know, one thing I noticed from this new zoning resolution, when you open it up in the browser, it opens up as Rutherford County and Murf, you know, Rutherford County zoning ordinance, so I assume that this was taken from Rutherford County's as a template, because that's the title of the webpage for this. And so, you know, I don't, no offense to Rutherford County or Murfreesboro, but I don't want to be like Rutherford County and Murfreesboro, that's why I live in Sumner County, and I know people moved here from Rutherford County to be in Sumner County. You know, there's a lot of things in this document that, again, criminalize minor offenses, severely restrict what you can do on a five-acre property, like you can have one storage shed versus like, why not two? I mean, there's, or even it limits watercraft, you've got two boats or stuff like that, it limits you in the county of what you can do reading this document. And these are the kind of things, you know, I, I don't want to limit people on this type of things, I don't think they should be in a county zoning document. I don't want to encourage, you know, one thing, one of these pages I looked at, it says to encourage the concentration of commercial establishments in integrated planned developments. I think about that, I think about the Meadows, it's a, you know, mega-community, where that's encouraging concentration of commercial establishments and integrated planned developments. And people, they don't want that, and because citizens are asking, what's protecting us here from these major PUDs and these residential PUD districts, just, you know, I feel like kind of going to go over the county now, because we're putting this in place to encourage that type of growth versus restricting it to the benefits of their neighbors. One thing that I saw in this, talking about the residential PUDs in Chapter 9, talks about adequate public facilities, says approval of a PUD shall be based upon a finding that streets, utilities, and drainage features have adequate capacity to serve the proposed development. What about schools? It doesn't talk about that. That's the number-one cost to any large development. I mean, if you, this Meadows thing is going to come before us next month, I believe, or sometime soon, it's 1,200 homes. I mean, if that's, if, when it's built out, seven to 10 years, if you've got 10, that many homes and two kids a home, that's easily 2,400 kids. I mean, you're talking half of a three-school complex. And so, there's things that this thing addresses, you know, there's just a lot of questions that I have problems with, and a lot of things are small, unfortunately, even though I do appreciate trying to get rid of the defunct part of this. You know, one thing that's not addressed in this, that I, I think would be great to be addressed, I know you quoted me, I guess, in the presentation, I appreciate you addressing that issue, that's the first I've heard of resolution to that, that I emailed you guys about, but, like in my district, there was a development, I think called Westbrook, that kind of fell off the face of the earth, that was approved, and I don't know if this is a state issue or a county issue, where if, if we vote to rezone something, and developer goes bankrupt, pulls out, is defunct, I would like to see some kind of restriction so that zoning automatically kicks back to what it was previously, with a 12-month timeframe or whatever, so that if it wants to be developed again and redeveloped for its, against its original zoning, which is .92 acres, that it'd have to go through that kind of rezoning process, and you just don't automatically, for, in perpetuity, be able to have zoning in place when there's no restrictions or any kind of deals with the developers. I know there's things worked out to make things better for buffer zones, I know this, this document might address it, but, now, these are kind of the questions citizens have asked me, and, you know, all kinds of things. I mean, even things from controlling trees on private property, and I wasn't sure, I was asking the yes question, I don't know if it's for, necessarily for a PUD, you know, or if somebody's got a, builds a one-acre, has a one-acre lot and builds a house, and they're, they're having what kind of trees they plant controlled. I couldn't quite discern that from this document. So, I assume it's for PUDs, it is my assumption, okay. And so that was kind of asked, but, you know, it just really comes down to, I, I think it's fair to the citizens to really give them time to talk about this, and ask questions, and to alleviate any fears that they have, or any kind of misconceptions that they have. And so, now, you know, and another goal, thing, just, you know, what I see from this, in my opinion, is, you know, I, I don't, I'm not a proponent of regionalization, personally. You know, in order for regionalization is bringing all things into one, one system. And the reason for that is to have control, you know, and in my opinion, this document, in some regards, encourages people to get out of rural areas and into, you know, larger cities or larger PUDs, and part of that process is, from a 30,000-foot view, when you do that, you actually start to lose a little bit of your form of representative government, because you start to have things that are more dictated by boards and commissions when it comes to zoning boards. I mean, there's, this, this zoning document creates a whole new, it grows government because it creates a whole new historic district, and one of the whole chapters and sections, seven new members, paying members, and so, I, I've not seen that addressed, but I mean, we are growing government, and, you know, the senior commissioner from the 1st District talked about earlier, looking at, basically, being compatible, lost my train of thought there, I'm going to move on, but, one, one thing that I learned tonight during financial management, and just talking about compatibility of residences and compatibility of, of people in our community, was that I learned that, you know, our AAA bond rating is what our county is right now, with the hopes of going, I mean, excuse me, a double-A-plus bond rating is what our county is now, with the hopes to go into AAA. And, but, one statement that was made tonight at the financial management meeting was that the ratings agency wants more rich people and less economically disadvantaged people, or poor people, translation in the county. And I have a problem with that statement, and so when it's, we're saying our goal is to be AAA soon, but admitting that the ratings agency wants more rich people and less economically disadvantaged people, what's the, what's the fastest way to do that is? Well, you, you create PUDs everywhere, and you create high-density PUDs and very expensive houses and developments that are very densely controlled, and you can control populations, you control people, you can control votes, you can control lifestyles, because you can tell, hey, your lifestyle is not, not compatible with this plan, therefore, you know, sorry, you know? And I literally had a constituent had that told to him. So, there are a lot of things, again, that I am just concerned about with this proposal, and I would love to have a little bit more fair debate in the community with this, knowing that July the 1st is kind of an arbitrary deadline at this point, it was set back in January before COVID, knowing that we do have time, it doesn't have any kind of financial impact, as it was related tonight by the finance director. So I would, I move to table this honestly and definitely, until, one, there's not emergency declarations being emailed out every week by the county mayor, saying, telling people to isolate and shelter in place, which is, so, and until the meetings can be held in communities to have citizens come and discuss this.
Okay, so there's a motion, a motion to table this resolution with a second? No debate? What's that? Yeah, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. No debate on table. How many votes? 16. We need 16 votes to table. A yes vote is to table, a no vote is to continue debating the main resolution.
Motion to table the resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
Mr. Mansfield, yes to table. Mr. Mansfield is a yes, Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves is a yes, Mr. Comenden?
No.
Mr. Comenden is a no.
Seven to 16, seven in favor, 16 against.
Okay. Seven in favor, 16 against, the motion to table fails. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir, and I want to take the opportunity to thank Josh as well, I've called him several times throughout the process, working through this. Appreciate the planning commission's work on it as well. And I'll make a statement before I go into my spiel. I still think that, that we're giving away the farm every day in Sumner County. We're giving away the farm. We're losing our farms every day in Sumner County. Every day, we are. And I wish, you know, spoke earlier about a, a, a history, historical commission, paid I'm going to make an amendment to this document, but I want to say this first. Back when the, the 2035 Growth Plan was mentioned here quite a bit during this presentation and tonight, well, when the 2035 Growth Plan document was being worked on, there's three members sitting in this body of this commission that were here when that was being worked on. There's only three members that was here during that time. Well, that just so happened during an election year, there was this, this document, the growth document, was, was being presented out in the community, 2010. I was running for office, and I attended one of those meetings at North Sumner Elementary School. I'm not sure where the other one's at, there was one held down in Bethpage somewhere, I know. So I, you know, I still think that that's what should happen. I still think that this should have been took out into the community, it still should be took out into the community, because it, you know, that way, if we don't make any changes, at least the community feels like they're involved in what's happening in the future of their land. Clarify a couple more statements. Within the last two or three days, I spoke to two mayors of Sumner County, two different Our second-largest city, I spoke to that mayor today, she wasn't completely on board with this. She doesn't think we need subdivisions out in the county everywhere. I, I agree, if you drive through Rutherford County, you drive through Wilson County, you'll go through a pretty countryside, then you'll see a subdivision. I don't want that for Sumner County. The people that live out where I live, and in a lot of the rural areas, we don't want that for Sumner County. We don't want PUDs. We don't want high-density development. We don't want moderate-density development. We live out in the country, out in the rural sections, for a reason. That's where we bought or where we was born and raised. So, I mean, I'm almost positive this is going to pass tonight, I, I've got all kinds of, little sticky notes that I've had for a while, on some of them, questions I went back from my computer to the document I picked up Friday. But I want to offer amendment to this, if we're going to appoint a paid committee to, to fall under this, this document in the historical society, I want to appoint a committee for the preservation and conservation of the rural areas of our county, and those be set up by zones of the rural, unincorporated areas of our county.
Okay, I consulted with the law director, Mr. Taylor, we can't make amendments to this document because it has to go back through planning. We can only vote up or down on this.
So, there's really, so this meeting, you can't do anything to the document, it'd been nice to know that before.
You can't amend it.
You can't amend it?
Right.
It has to come through planning commission.
The amendments have to come through planning commission.
And they have to be noticed, like, like this has been noticed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one more?
Yeah, can you key your mic? Hang on, Mr. Taylor, I'll come back to you in a second.
I think the proper process, and, and Ms. Dinnan would, correct me if I'm wrong, is, for anybody here, no matter which commissioner wants to appoint a committee, an ad hoc committee, would go to legislative, and then to the full commission, or unless the chairman so decided to inform it. So I'm just saying.
Yeah, so Commissioner Taylor, I think we can, we can look at creating that committee, it just comes through legislative, not as a part of this document.
Okay. I request that then, respectfully.
Okay, if you can, Mr. Taylor, if you can talk to Commissioner Ring, and tell, and explain to him what you're looking at.
I will, but it probably won't be tonight. So.
Hang on, Commissioner Taylor, hang, one second, we're coming back to you. There you go.
So can't make, can't make no amendments to this. So there's really, I mean, there's nothing, except for discussions. So there's really, I mean, there's nothing, except for discussions, all we can really do, other than, than move to refer it.
Are you going to move to refer it?
Yes, sir, that's my motion.
Okay, got a motion to refer? Second by Commissioner Mansfield. There's no debate on a motion to refer requires 16 votes. So a yes vote is to refer, a no vote is to continue on discussion on the main resolution.
What's the action, refer to what?
Would refer back to planning.
You'd have to go back to planning.
Come back in two months, or a month or two?
Two months.
Two months.
Do you read it, Mr. Chairman?
Uh huh. So a yes vote is to refer, a no vote is to continue debate.
All right, motion to refer is on the board, each commissioner, please record your
Okay, Mr. Mansfield?
Yes to refer.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield is a yes to refer, Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves is a yes to refer, Mr. Comenden?
Absolutely, no.
Mr. Comenden is a no.
Six in favor, seventeen against.
Okay, six in favor, seventeen opposed, the motion to refer fails. Okay, Mr. Comenden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I would just like to say that I also have constituents, and I've talked to many of them, landowners all around me and all over Portland, and Portland, in our area, has the largest planting region of any city in Sumner County. And we talk about, I've also talked to a lot of builders, a lot of developers, and I've been talking to landowners and others for at least 10 years, so this is something, believe me, that is not new. And, but we talk about individual rights, well, I'm going to tell you about the, the land that individuals own that are in the planting region. Whether it's in Portland, whether it's in Gallatin, whether it's in Hendersonville, if you own land in that planting region and you don't have some other property inside the city, those planning, planners can tell you what you can and can't do with your property, and you can't vote for any of them. You don't have a right to vote for them. Right now, if I build something across the road on my farm in front of my house, I have to go to the city of Portland and get a building permit, I have to come to Gallatin to get a land disturbance permit, I have to come to Gallatin to get a driveway permit, I have to come to Gallatin to get electrical permit, I have to run all over the county to get the necessary permits to build something that the city of Portland Planning Department tells me that I can and can't build, that I can't vote for anybody. And I don't know how many of you have driven around on the rural country roads in Sumner County. We talk about we don't want planned use developments, you ought to see all the roads, they're dividing up all these farms. Mom and daddy died, or grandpa and grandma died, and the younger people are selling the farms, dividing them up in one-acre lots, and there's driveway cuts every 100 feet on an eight-foot-wide road that you can't even meet people on. So we're going to have to redo those roads because of traffic. Like it or not, our county is not nearly as rural as it used to be, and more and more people are coming here. If you, if you have a planned use development, then usually you have a entrance into a subdivision, and it's, it's divided up. Some people I know and I understand want to buy a 100-acre farm, and they want to put their house right in the middle of it, and, and all that's fine and good, even the one-acre lots are fine and good, but we are getting so many of them that there is hardly no roads left in Sumner County that doesn't have all these driveways on them. And, well, anyway, that's all I'm going to say, but there is already, to go on record, a historic district, and it's in Castaic Springs, and that's the only historic thing that I know of anywhere, and, and it is overseen by a board to make sure that things that are built in that historic district conform to what's in the area now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Comenden. Ms. Kruger.
I just, I wanted to comment on a couple of things that have been mentioned earlier. We talked about citizens feeling like, you know, they, they were incompatible and that sort of thing, and I know, I know exactly which citizen we're referring to. As a matter of fact, I called that citizen myself personally on February 10th, not last week, but on February 10th, sent the link to this document, actually spoke to Josh about improving the maps, so the maps could be easier to read online, and had connected Josh and this same citizen. So, it's been out there, I understand if you just saw it last week, and I am sorry about that, but the planning commission has worked so hard on this, back when the Long Hollow corridor planning was going on. The end result of all of those conversations with all of those citizens that were engaged and involved in that was, this was the goal of what they wanted. They wanted to see these regulations, they wanted to see things like this that prevented what we're talking about, driveways every 10 feet, and, and, you know, things just being willy-nilly all over the county. And individual liberties part bothers me a little bit, because we're talking about people asking for rezoning, and how that makes everybody upset that people ask for rezoning, but that is a property owner's right. So we're talking about people being mad about somebody's individual rights already. You can't take those rights away. I don't want anybody taking that right away from my property, I own that property, then I should be able to ask to have it rezoned, just like anybody else. So, just asking to have it rezoned doesn't necessarily mean it gets, mean it gets rezoned, but it does mean I have that right. And we can't complain about that. I think that there's a lot of work that's been gone into this, and we need to recognize that and appreciate that and, and understand, this is, something has to give, because otherwise we're going to just have junk stuff built all over the county. So it's nice to finally have some sort of rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Mr. Rhodes.
Yeah, thank, I just want to be upfront and honest, I've been serving on the planning commission with Josh and Mr. Comenden and Mr. Taylor. We've spent many evenings seeing different things come through there. Josh has worked really hard on putting this together. We've seen tons of flag lots that we'd like to go away, and I think a lot of people in here may be taking a lot of this stuff out of context and putting their own words into what they think it is. So I am 100% behind supporting this. So with that being said, I'm going to call the question.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes has called the question, is there a second?
Next.
Second by Ms. Kruger. No debate, a yes vote is to end discussion and vote on the resolution, a no vote is to continue debate. Yes.
Mr. Taylor did it earlier.
Yeah, the law director says you can do it.
All right, you ready, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
The call for the question is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield on the motion.
No, the call to question.
Okay, no on call to question, Mr. Mansfield, Mr. Graves?
No.
Mr. Graves, no on call to question, Mr. Comenden?
Yes.
Mr. Comenden is a yes on call to question.
Eighteen to five.
Okay, by a vote of eighteen to five, the question has been called, we will now vote on the main resolution. Yes vote is to approve 2006-10 comprehensive amendments to the zoning resolution, official county zoning map.
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote.
The question was called, Mr. Hinton. It doesn't matter on the call to question, it's when the question's called.
Anyone not voting, wish to vote, anyone wish to change your vote?
I'm voting no.
Mr. Mansfield is a no on the motion, Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Graves is a yes on the motion, Mr. Comenden?
Yes.
Mr. Comenden is a yes.
All right, the vote, the vote is sixteen in favor, four against, anyone not voting wishing to vote?
Okay.
I did not have your vote.
Mr. Wright, what was your vote? Mr. Wright's a no.
All right, so another no. Mr. Hinton, do you wish to vote?
Yes.
You, wait, yes, you wish to vote?
[laughing].
And then we're missing one more, seventeen to five.
No, seventeen to five, that's right. Yeah, that's right. No, now we got one more.
All right, so seventeen to five, we got.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment, he's so kind, he's not trying to get involved.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Hinton.
Fifteen, eighteen, no, eighteen, eighteen.
Okay, eighteen to five, the motion passes, go ahead, Mr. Hinton.
If there is, if there are serious groups around this county that is very disturbed about what we've just done, I can't imagine Josh not being willing to go to those people and have a discussion about what we've just done here tonight.
Yes, sir.
So, if you've got folks in your district that are discouraged, encourage them to make the call, because I can't believe that we can't resolve some of the issues, and if they can't, if they come up with something legitimate, this is the place to get it changed, or at least talked about it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Comen, uh, thank you, Mr. Hinton. Is there a motion to adjourn? Yep. Adjourn.